We'll go ahead and get started. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Sotolongo, Dave Rosacker, our Vice Chairman, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Current Planning Manager, Robert LaRocco, Planning Board Administrator, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Debbie Hightower is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follow. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us down here. You're welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are consent cases have been recommended for layover or approval and have already been heard or perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you're representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Law can be found in a white binder in this room. There are, well, there is one change to the agenda. Agenda item number two is on administrative meeting only. I'm going to change that. We're going to take Agenda item number two and number 20 together, and we will open that up to a public hearing. So with that, we'll get started with the consent cases. Agenda item number three, case C eight dash twenty-one dash three thirty-six, C ten dash twenty-one dash three thirty-nine. Applicant Jason Tidblum, Tidblum Enterprises LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow construction sales and services in the CC District, along with the approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district. This was laid over from our December meeting. Location: Eighty-eight thirty-eight Maple Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 10, case C three dash twenty-two dash oh-oh-two. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of the disposition of city-owned property to an interested party. Location: Twenty-eight fourteen Ohio Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 11, case C three dash twenty-two dash oh-oh-three. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of the disposition of city-owned property to an interested part, to an interested party, sorry about that. Location: Twenty-six ten North Twenty-eighth Avenue and twenty-eight fifty-eight Ohio Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, it will be removed, sir, and it'll come on. Number 11 has been removed. It'll come on with the regular agenda. Agenda item number 14, case C ten dash twenty-two dash eleven, C twelve dash twenty-two dash twelve. Applicant, City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Heartland of America Park Replat One, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from DS and CBD to CBD, along with approval of the ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location: Northeast of Eighth and Douglas Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 15, case C ten dash twenty-two dash thirteen, C twelve dash twenty-two dash fourteen. Applicant, Celebrity Homes Omaha. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Stratford West, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG and DR to R four. Location: Southwest of one hundred and seventy-first Street and Military Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Remove it? Okay. Agenda item number 15 has been removed. Continuing on, agenda item number 17, case C ten dash twenty-two dash seventeen, C twelve dash twenty-two dash nineteen. Applicant, Orchard Valley. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Hamilton Village, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from GC to R eight. Location: Northwest of Forty-first Avenue and Hamilton Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 18, case C ten dash twenty-two dash twenty. Applicant, Romella Marion. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from GI to R five. Location: Eighteen twenty-eight Sailor Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 19, case C ten dash twenty-two dash twenty-one. Applicant, Kristi Brumbaugh. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from R two and R three to R three. Location: Eighty-one twenty-one Grant and eighty-two oh-six Burdette Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 23, case C eleven dash twenty-two dash eighteen. Applicant, Orchard Valley. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location: Northwest of Forty-first Avenue and Hamilton Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 24, case C eight dash twenty-two dash twenty-two. Applicant, Michael Holton. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow auto sales in the CC District. Location: Forty-eight thirty-five South Ninety-seventh Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 25, case C eight dash twenty-two dash twenty-three. Applicant, Mark Sanford. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow auto sales in the CC District. Property is located within and within a major commercial corridor overlay district. Location: Twenty-three twenty-two and twenty-three thirty-four North Ninetieth Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 26, case C eight dash twenty-two dash twenty-four. Applicant, Lance Brown. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow small group living disabled located within six hundred feet of another group home. Location: Five oh-six South Twenty-seventh Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 29, case C seven dash twenty-two dash twenty-seven. Applicant, Sharon Hopson. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow a daycare general in the R six district pending. Location: Southeast of Sixty-sixth and Bedford Ave., one hundred and sixty-six, I'm sorry, and Bedford Ave. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion for the consent items that are on for approval?
Motion to approve Agenda items number three, ten, eleven.
Nope, eleven was taken off.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Three, ten, fourteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-nine.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Okay, Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve seven zero.
Those consent items that were left on consent, if you are here for one of those, no further action will be taken at this meeting. You are welcome to stay. You are welcome to leave. It's up to you. We'll continue on. The first item on the agenda is administrative only. There will be no opportunity for public hearing. It's Agenda item number one, case C ten dash twenty-one dash two seventy-one, C twelve dash twenty-one dash two seventy-two. Applicant, Celebrity Homes Omaha. Request: Final plat approval of Woodbrook Valley, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R four. Location: South of one hundred and eighty-sixth and Ida Streets. Eric?
Yeah, so the preliminary plat for Woodbrook Valley was approved by, recommended for approval by Planning Board back in October, and approved by City Council November ninth. It includes the full platted site, two hundred and ten single-family lots, five outlots within fifty-two acres. The project is no longer utilizing a temporary lift station and will tie into the adequate sewer infrastructure. There is a little bit of coordination that is needed before proceeding to City Council regarding the source and use of funds, and city staff will coordinate with the developer on that. That being said, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R four. Approval of the final plat of Woodbrook Valley subject to the five conditions in the report prior to City Council.
Okay, any questions or comments from the Board? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the rezoning from AG to R four and approval of the final plat of Woodland, Woodbrook Valley subject to the five conditions outlined in the recommendation report.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve seven zero.
Okay, and now we're going to take Agenda items number two and 20 together. And like I said at the beginning, we're going to take number two off of the administrative meeting and put it into the public hearing. Agenda item number two is case C twelve dash twenty-one dash two forty-six. Applicant, SRE Development. Request: Final plat approval of Emmanuel Lakeside, a cluster subdivision inside city limits. Location: Southeast of one hundred and seventy-seventh and Francis Street. And Agenda item number 20 is case C eleven dash twenty-one dash two forty-five. Applicant, SRE Development. Request: Approval of a planned unit development overlay district. Location: Southeast of one hundred and seventy-seventh and Francis Street. And Jeff, you're up.
Yes, good afternoon. Jeff Lake, behalf of SRE Development and Emmanuel Healthcare, address two one zero zero eight Cumberland Drive. What you have before you is both the final plat and a PUD for a housing project. It's an age-restricted housing project on the west edge of the Emmanuel campus, located generally east of one hundred and seventy-seventh Street and between Francis and Arbor. The housing will be forty-six single-family homes. As I mentioned, age-restricted housing. It's a, I guess, an entrance into the Emmanuel campus. It's a unique project where we are plating off single-family lots that will be owned by Emmanuel with ground leases to the residents of the homes, so they will own those homes. They will appreciate the equity in those homes and allow them an avenue to get into the campus. The PUD component of that, you've seen both of these before, I believe, with the preliminary plat and PUD. There was one condition of that PUD where we were required to provide two sidewalks on the west side of that project connecting to one hundred and seventy-seventh Street. We worked with the Planning Department to come up with a compromise to have one connection. That compromise happened before City Council, and we had, the council had acted on that and removed that condition down to one. So I think that's a modification to this PUD. Otherwise, it's consistent with what you've seen and approved before. And with that, I'd answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the Board?
Eric? Yeah, so the applicant summarized that very nicely. November twenty-third is when City Council voted and amended the condition to provide the one sidewalk to the west, one hundred and seventy-seventh Street. Therefore, that changed the recommendation, essentially the PUD. That's why it's back on the agenda and why we opened this up for the public hearing. What would ordinary just be in administrative meeting only for the final plat? One item to point out for the plat, the public sanitary sewers will need to be placed under private streets as was approved with the preliminary plat. A few other items, such as adding street, the proper street names to the final plat, my lars and things like that will be needed. We'll take two separate motions and votes. So for Agenda item two, staff, unless you have any questions, staff recommends approval of the final plat subject to the four conditions in the recommendation report prior to City Council.
Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the final plat subject to addressing the five, or excuse me, four items in the staff report prior to submission to the City Council for final action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve seven zero.
And Agenda item number 20?
Yeah, for the PUD, staff recommends approval of the PUD subject to submittal of acceptable final PUD plans prior to City Council.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion for the approval of the PUD planned unit development overlay district subject to the submittal of acceptable final PUD plans prior to forwarding this request to City Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve seven zero.
Moving on, Agenda item number four, case C three dash twenty-two dash four. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request: Approval of an amendment to the Interceptor Sewer Master Plan arterial street improvement program and the urban development element of the city's master plan. Location: City of Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. And Adam and Ryan are going to present. Adam, you're up.
Thanks a lot. Adam Wellness, on behalf of City of Omaha Public Works Department, eighteen nineteen Farnham Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one eight three. So what I wanted to do here today, just quickly, is kind of introduce a few things that are related. The update primarily of the Interceptor Sewer Connection Fee, the sewers that are proposed to be built under that update, you know, and then the fee change that's going to support the building of the sewers, and corresponding area of the present development zone PDZ that's going to be opened up as part of that. So just as way of background, our current master plan for Interceptor Sewer Extensions was done in 2015. That was done by a consultant, and in 2021, actually, we've been working on this for a couple of years, we're doing an in-house kind of staff update through Public Works Department, looking at the sewers, the cost to extend those sewers, and the corresponding areas that those would open up for development. We did a lot of work into cost estimates. We, you know, one of the things we did is look at those pretty close. We also sent those out for third-party review to a couple of local engineering firms who do a lot of this, Lampard, Nielsen, and E&amp;A. Once we were fairly confident with the cost estimating, we then started looking at different fee scenarios and present development zone scenarios that could be done. Just want to point out, unlike previous updates, we did not do a full hydraulic model update. We did not do a full capacity update. We're still using those from the 2014 report that supported the 2015 master plan. Just for your reference, up on the screen now, which no one can probably see, is the current fee schedule that's in the municipal code. The proposal, fee proposal that we're bringing out as a part of this, again, it starts in 2022. So the current municipal code goes up through 2019. That's shown there. Those are, there were no increases for the last two years, in 2020 or 2021. This would begin, if adopted, after adoption in 2022. The red top line there is an increase in single-family residential fees of approximately $350 a year. The colors in blue there are just equivalent percentage increases to the other categories of mobile home, other residential, commercial, and industrial. So that's where we started. And we took this out. We did some outreach to development community and probably some of those in the room, looking for feedback on the connection fees, on the PDZ area and a number of things. We did get some feedback based on that. One of the things actually was to open up more area for development, which required the construction of more sewers, which actually increased the fee slightly to what we're, what I'm showing here today. The other suggestion that we received as part of that outreach effort was to modify the single-family residential connection fee from a flat fee per lot to a fee based on the total square footage of that home. So it would really be based on the overall size of that home, and that's what I'm going to hopefully show here. We did this in the way, looking back 10 years at historical data, the size of the homes, to try to do it in a revenue-neutral way to support that, really, the affordable housing and the, kind of, the comments and the feedback we had received. And so what I'm showing there is a change in how the single-family residential fee would be calculated. Historically, it's been on a per-lot basis. This would change it to a basis of total square footage, which includes garage shed basement and above-ground home areas. And again, we, this was done in a response to some feedback we received, and really meant to be revenue-neutral to the $350 a year increase that was proposed. We're also recommending that, again, what we've done here is kind of a master plan update, a minor update. We're recommending that a major update, similar to what was done in 2014 or 15, be initiated in 2023 to do a full analysis of the hydraulics and some of the economic impacts and those types of things that were done in the past. There's a lot of information. I'm going to kind of summarize this quickly. It's a look back at the 2015 master plan and what happened. The top chart shows anticipated revenue that was a part of that 2015 plan in green, and then what we actually received in revenue for that rate structure in blue. Revenue was higher by $2.8 million over that period. The middle chart kind of shows expenses to the fund, again, what was anticipated in purple, what we actually saw in blue. And there were a number of things happening there, but when you parse those out, we saw actual project costs about 28% higher than was planned for in the previous master plan. The bottom chart just kind of shows a history of our fund balance. We ended the previous planning period 2022 with $6.2 million in the fund. There's a lot going on here that I'm going to kind of go over quickly, but this just goes looking out to the future, taking that, you know, our actuals and projecting under the new proposed fee schedule what those revenues would look like. And then the projects identified below, again, are the same project identifiers as in the 2015 report, and I'll show a map of that here, which is probably more useful. The important thing here, okay, so this kind of puts it all together as well. And again, we talked about this a little previously, but the line in this graph is kind of the projected fund balance. People may notice it does go negative for a while, but the, kind of, the bottom line here is that in the 2022 to 2030 timeframe, we're planning on about $43.4 million of sewer extensions, okay, and the fee schedule we expect, again, based on historic trends, to bring in about $40 million. And at the end of 2021, there was between $3 and $4 million. And so overall, the fees brought in are enough to cover the projected projects. Again, from a cash flow situation, if a lot of projects are done early, as this is showing, you know, between different financing or different ways of reimbursing SIDs for these Interceptor Sewer Extensions can be looked at, but we've done these in the past, and we really think, bottom line, the funding proposed and the sewers that were proposed match up fairly well. Now I'll get to the area. This may be a little difficult to see. This is all in northwest Omaha, so the areas in gray were areas added to the present development zone or PDZ back in the 2015 report, so those are already in. The areas with the, with kind of the hatch mark, crosshatch, have been added by variance already, so this area has been growing and changing. The areas in yellow are going to be added with sewers that are currently under construction. There's some phase of design or construction, so they're in the works. And then again, the areas in purple show sewers that we anticipate, under this fee schedule in this timeframe, to be built, and then bring in the area in the purple, which is another 2,400 acres. So these three acre areas together can bring over 3,300 acres into the present development zone. Just quickly on costs, one of the things I wanted to highlight was really, one of the things that kind of drove fee increases a little bit, in addition to opening up more area, just, we took a really closer look at the costs, and we mentioned that we were 28% over our previous master planning costs. We looked at these in detail. So we came up, the little more sewer length, but also in a cost-per-foot basis, we're about 35% higher now than we were in 2015. But again, a previous master plan did include some capacity improvements to the tune of about 62 million. Again, with this look, we're, it's a minor update. We're kind of just looking at the extensions and not really the capacity improvements. So to sum it all up for you, the proposed fee schedule that we've showed you here today includes an equivalent increase in the single-family residential, $350 a year for years 2022 through 2025, an equivalent percentage increase in those other categories. We did then go back and convert to a fee of cents per total square foot rather than the flat fee per lot to provide a scale based on the size of the home, based on feedback that we've received. We do have an interactive map on this that I won't pull up here, but the fee structure that we're proposing does support these extensions that correlate with the 3,300 acres bringing into the present development zone. Again, just want to stress, we have been proactive on outreach and getting feedback in this and really have incorporated that feedback. And we do also recommend to do another update in 2023. So that is my, that is my quick run-through. I'll leave it at that.
Just a quick question for you.
Yes.
So how many developers did you interact with or get feedback from?
We had a meeting in September of this year with, I think there were approximately 50 attendees to that. I do have the attendee list, but I don't have it in front of me.
That's okay. I was just curious. I'm glad it was a larger number, because that's a pretty good representation, I think, there. So that's good. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Adam.
Yep.
Ryan?
Ryan Haas with the Public Works Department. So along with the, any update to the Interceptor Sewer Plan, we also run through an analysis of the ASIP fee. Those typically go together. So we did that in 2015, and we did it again this year with the Interceptor Sewer Update. The outcome is a lot, it's pretty straightforward. It's more of a housekeeping, more housekeeping than anything. We will be doing a fee schedule to match the Interceptor Sewer as far as each of the next four years. We're proposing a 4% increase annually. That's really just to counteract increases to construction costs. We're also amending the list of ASIP projects to clear out the ones that have been already constructed, keeping the last remaining one that's currently in there, which is Q Street from one hundred and ninety-second to two hundred and fourth. That'll be the number one priority project going forward, should be built here, hopefully within the next year or two. And then introducing the next project, second in the list, one hundred and fifty-sixth Street from West Maple to Ford. second in the list, 156th Street from West Maple to Ford Street. And then we streamlined the way we calculate the fee on the single-family residential to match what we're doing with the interceptor sewer fee, for simplicity's sake, on a cents-per-total square foot basis.
Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's John Fulenkamp, my address is 11440 West Center Road. This master plan amendment goes back many years, probably actually decades, and was originally written as a cooperative effort between your Planning Department, Public Works Department, Traffic Department, and the development community, the Metropolitan Omaha Builders Association have been involved, to update this plan. The bottom line, I'm sure you picked this up, is that when these large suburban sewers are built to provide some reasonable contiguous growth to Omaha, it is in fact unfunded by development fees and building permit fees, and the same thing with the ASAP fees, and those were tied together maybe five or 10 years ago, because just if you have all the sewers and you don't have the roads, you have to have the roads to go with them, so the ASAP fees are there as well. For your information, depending on what part of town you're in, the ASAP fees, remember when Q Street used to be such a mess years ago, when it went in and out, and in and out, and in and out? Well, that's where the ASAP fees fixed that, constructed that whole thing. 168th and Blondo was constructed by ASAP fees within the last few years, and the next project goes northwest. So it's been a collaborative effort between your Planning Department, as I said, and the other agencies. And Mr. Payden, in answer to your question, most of the engineering firms, lawyers, finance people, home builders, and so forth, we made a mistake and didn't send an invitation to MOBA, they got one late, they came back, they understood what's going on, so we're here to support this. Nobody likes extra fees, but we also like to support the proposition of reasonable contiguous growth, supported by the fees that the people who actually use that property use. So be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Jaylee Ellenstein, Executive Director of MOBA, Metro Omaha Builders Association, address 2637 South, 158th Plaza, 68130. On behalf of the Metro Omaha Builders Association, we accept the amendment to the interceptor sewer master plan and improvements to the ASAP program. MOBA's mission is to promote and protect the homebuilding industry, and although no one wants to pay more, we feel that the fee is reasonable, and our community is in need of additional lots to develop and build on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing then, are there any opponents? Seeing then, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, I don't have much to add, other than what was already said, you know, just to reiterate, it was a very collaborative process with different departments and the development community. This does open up nearly six square miles of developable ground in a quickly-moving part of our city and jurisdiction in the northwest portions. Hopefully, this will allow us to not have to approve as many variances to the plating that we've had for, seems like, meeting after meeting here at the planning board. So it'll be good to get this wrapped up and approved. So unless there's any questions, staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Not approved.
We have a motion and a second, Debbie, please record the vote.
Page?
Yes.
So Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Agenda item number five, case C3-21-287, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the Forever North Housing and Multimodal Transportation Strategy. Location: An area generally bound by Ames Avenue on the north, Coming Street on the south, 20th Street on the east, and Highway 75 on the west. Callie, you're presenting.
Hi, good afternoon, Kelly Johnston Dorsey with the Omaha Planning Department. The proposed plan before you Forever North will offer guidance for future development and transportation from coming to Ames, the north freeway to 20th Street. The bulk of the work done for this plan was done in 2019, including extensive community engagement. This plan takes that community engagement and has developed a series of recommendations on development, connections, art, history, culture, and programs and services for people. An emphasis in this plan is creating mixed-income housing, not displacing current residents, mixed-use development along North 24th Street, and multimodal connectivity. We have several, there was a few people in the audience who I know are going to speak, so I'm going to be brief, but I am here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Callie. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Hey, Manny, Manuel Cook, I'm here for work, so Spark, address Fabric Lab, 2514 North 24th Street. And there's a lot of things I could say, I brought a big packet worth of things, and I know you're looking at me like, don't do that, and I'm not going to do that.
Oh, you're fine.
But I'll hit on-
You're here to present what you want to present.
Yeah, well, I'll hit on a few things.
Manny, just keep it short.
Right on, right on. I hit on a few things, and Kelly mentioned it, but I just wanted to point it out on the first page of the plan. So, yep, so if you don't know, I worked for City Planning, and I led this effort as far as community engagement, and one of the, the number-one thing that came from the community above all else was not wanting to be displaced. In fact, the name of the plan, Forever North, means forever north side, so it's good to see that protect existing residents from displacement is the number-one priority still under development, and that's the number-one thing. Go on to say, you know, as far as community engagement, you can test me on this, I might be wrong, but I think this plan probably had the most community engagement in recent history for the City of Omaha. And then I'll also add that even though it hasn't passed through Planning Board or City Council yet, it's been referenced and used by the state for missing mill workforce housing funds, within the Planning Department, I know for improving sidewalks and such in 24th and Pratt area, streetscape planning by the BID and others, Metro is working on increasing transportation frequency with Metro Next. Let's see, what else? A lot of facade improvements, including some of the buildings that we're working on now, and new businesses. I think we have, of course, more people who are going to talk, but I know North End Tele Services references the plan as well, and that will bring a lot of jobs to the area, and keep them there, as well as other things. Let's see, what else do I want to talk about with this? I'll save the rest of it for the City Council if I need to, and I'll let some other people talk, thank you.
Manny, I have a question before you go.
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about the work that Spark is doing, the organization with which you work, to create opportunities for folks from this community, as well as maybe a small business owner or a small developer, like the opportunities that your organization provides that would allow them to get involved in developing this quarter?
Yeah, so one of the main things is we have a developer academy, so that teaches people how to become developers. So through the process, whether it's, you know, going through pre-app meetings, I actually am going to one tomorrow with some developers that work with us. So we do that, we have financing support, I help around some of the planning efforts, you know, zoning and such like that. So we do that, we also, our Fabric Lab that I mentioned, we're growing that into Urban Design Lab, so everything from planning to architecture, you know, urban design, those things. And I'll also mention, you know, something that's called out in this plan, and a project that we're working on, the North Omaha Trail, it's separate from what the question you asked me, but see, you got me going, so I'm going to keep going. And that's going to start here this spring, and it's going to be a two-mile trail, public health infrastructure, cultural amenities as well, public art, we have funded for that, and, you know, along with everything else that's going on on 24th Street, from, you know, future housing development, current housing development, mixed-use development, you know, detoxist streetscapes and improved transit, I think it's really leading to a new era for the community. But again, I say all that, and I will go back to protecting residents from displacement, because without doing that, none of the rest of it really matters, so.
Thanks, Manny.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon, I'm Carmen Tapio, and I'm President and CEO of North End Tele Services LLC, but I'm also here today representing Forever, my earring is caught on the darn mask, Forever North Real Estate, and I believe in this plan so much that I named my new real estate company after it. I see this as many years of collaborative, intensive work that was done, not only by the City Planning Department, but involvement of key stakeholders, and as I look at the list and I look at the body of work, I think it is much needed, it has been a long time in coming, and I think now is the time for us to see this through. Manny is someone that I respect and appreciate, as many others who have led the development of this plan, many of you that are sitting as part of this Planning Department as well, I know that your involvement, and it is a much-needed guide for the future development of northeast Omaha. We are embarking upon a $40 to $50 million development at the corner of 24th and Lake Street, which we acknowledge its historic, its historic meaning and importance to the community, and we see the plan as the tenants in which we will be using to guide our development in and of itself. New corporate headquarters for our company, as well as, we're looking to 80 to 100 housing units, daycare, food service, and other amenities that would be made available to the community. And I would just say, one of the things, again, that I'm most impressed with and would hold firmly to is to make sure that we are not displacing the current residents. My company was founded on the basis of creating opportunities for people in the community, and that the community would directly benefit from the jobs that we create and the leadership development and the career path development that we offer as well. I see this plan as a way of continuing and expanding upon our ability to uplift the community. I believe a rising tide lifts all boats, this plan represents the tide of change that is needed in northeast Omaha. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carmen. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Ben Swan, 3515 Hawthorne. I'm the owner of the Car Nation Ballroom, 2701 North 24th Street, and I am a volunteer member of the North 24th Street BID Association, which is a fundraising board for the BID. I'm here in support of the Forever North Plan, because what I've seen in the last two years is disinvested area, where Manny and a lot of other community leaders in the area have fostered a sense of volunteerism and civic engagement between professionals, between neighborhood residents, between existing building and business owners, people who aspire to be building and business owners, or to fix up their properties that have had, you know, periods of neglect and disinvestment, and it's just been a wonderful thing to watch the plan come together, and when this actually becomes something that's able to be acted on, you know, that's just going to be an exciting thing to restore this area to the cultural treasure that it can be for all of Omaha. So thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Any other proponents?
Hello, my name is Jewel Rogers. I'm here as an individual, I do work at Nodle Companies, but my address is 2011 Word Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68110. I just wanted to voice my support for this program as a resident, but also as a graduate of the Spark Academy, and then I also grabbed a master's in real estate development and took those two programs at the same time, and because I wanted to do work in Omaha, I can tell you that even the Developer Academy was just as beneficial, if not more beneficial, than the actual master's degree that I got. So I'm very, very grateful for the work that Spark has done, but grateful for the work that Manny is doing, and all the people that help support Manny and guide Manny, and everybody else in the neighborhood and the area who give support to these plans and these initiatives. It's, it has an incredible impact beyond what you could put in a pro forma or someone's spreadsheet, I just wanted to state that. My full support, thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Good afternoon, Ralph Lassiter, pastor of the Mount Mariah Missionary Baptist Church, 2602 North 24th Street, member of the North 24th Street Business Improvement District, and also president of the North 24th Street Business Improvement District Association, its fundraising arm. I've seen, over my 45 years in Omaha, several plans developed, I have copies of several plans. This is the first time a plan is actually moving from paper to action, and I fully support it, as not only a pastor who represents 100 families who live in North Omaha, but also as a citizen, and also as a black man. There is a need for affordable housing for low-income individuals in North Omaha. If you look at the Forever North Plan, I believe that was a statement in Manny, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that if 100 units were built every year, we would never meet, still would not meet the need, so there is a significant need for housing. Mount Mariah is included in the plan, we own property, and we are developing a 40-unit complex for individuals who are 55 years and older and who are of low income. That's our way of contributing to meeting the need. I also want to just thank the Planning Department for their support of our work and providing the guidance that will allow us to get to a point where we think not only can our project move forward, but all of these projects can move forward. So I don't have, I just brought this down for show. But fully support this plan, and hope that you do the same, thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon, my name is Daniel Goodwin Jr. I'm the owner of Goodwin Spencer Street Barbershop, 3116 North 24th Street, and also co-founder of Global Leadership Group, which is directly beside Goodwin Spencer Street Barbershop. In 2015, I took over as the owner of Goodwin Spencer Street Barbershop, one of the longest-running businesses in, on North 24th Street, and one of the few surviving legacy businesses. My dad founded the barbershop in 1955, and has been a staple and a hub in the community since that era, and has significant, made significant marks in the civil rights movement. Forever North is extremely important for Goodwin Spencer Street Barbershop and the businesses we have planned for that block, we recently had a development done. Forever North is crucial for us to survive, and other legacy businesses as well. I don't see how anyone can be an opponent of this measure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Daniel. Any other proponents?
Cheryl Weston, 1811 Immett Street, Omaha, Nebraska, representing myself. I'm a longtime resident of North Omaha, live very close to North 24th Street. I think the plan is good, and overall, the one thing I would hope that makes sure that gets in here, and as Carmen spoke earlier, is Ann Manning, the importance of the anti-displacement policies. That is definitely needs to be sure that that is number one. All of this that's happening, it's for people who have been in North Omaha and want to stay in North Omaha, and she said she believed in it so much, she named her real estate company Forever North. So only way that's going to happen is that these plans that are for North Omaha and North 24th Street development, which is a good thing, is that we make that number-one priority. So I hope all of you will see that- So, I hope all of you will see that this plan is approved, which it will be, is that the city council or wherever stepped, the city planning, this is one of the reasons, the main reason that you are supporting this program, is to the improvement, but to make sure that there's not anti-displacement such as took place when the interstate went through our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon and thank you, my name's Ralph Kleinsmith, Lozier Corporation, four two two four North Twenty-second, as well as six three three six Pershing Drive. I'm also a member of the Twenty-Fourth Street, North Twenty-Fourth Street Business Improvement District, and I can't really add a lot more than what my colleagues and coworkers have spoken about, but I want to add a different, maybe a flair to it, is we are a major provider in the North Omaha community, we employ over a thousand employees, and I've been with Lozier for over twenty-five years, and I've seen how the community has slowly became more vacant in the area, and we feel that impact. From a human standpoint, having the study move forward is the right thing to do for people, but also from a business standpoint, it's really paramount that Lozier Corporation can continue to hire good quality people in the area. We've seen an impact this past few years of that eroding away. So, we know from a business standpoint and the right thing to do standpoint, how important it would be to bring back North Twenty-Fourth Street, northeast Omaha area into more of a vibrant community, so we can continue offering some good-paying positions. Because right now, we are the number one steel manufacturing for displaced shelving in the country, and we plan to stay that way, and programs such as the development program we're talking about today allow us and help us stay that competitive. So, thank you.
Thank you Ralph. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Willie Barney, twenty-four oh one Lake Street with the Empowerment Network and also with the Revive Center, and soon to be the Carver Legacy Center on twenty-four sixteen Lake Street. Very encouraged by what I've seen, what I've heard, for those that don't know, this has for us been a ten-year-plus journey of trying to bring attention back to Twenty-Fourth and Lake and help people understand the economic reality of what can happen when this district, Twenty-Fourth Street and specifically Twenty-Fourth and Lake is rebuilt. So, I'm very encouraged by the amount of work that Manny and others have done. I was a witness to the outreach that was conducted by Manny, the on-the-street, very innovative, creative ways of getting the community involved. I'm definitely in support, and one of the main reasons we've been involved from an empowerment network standpoint is what's been emphasized, is the people that live in the community benefit from all this development. So, I think that's a common theme you've heard, it's a common reinforcement that everybody has on it. On the other side, on the business side as well, very much invested, my wife and I have committed to this community, we've encouraged others to open business, and then we said, let's lead by example as well, so we've opened a business, we'll be opening a second business very quickly here, but I'm excited about the momentum that's been building, the investments that have been talked about, if you look through that plan, there's a faith community, there's neighborhood engagement, there's business, small business, large business, so it's really a great time for North Omaha. If you add that to the other opportunities that are coming through ARPA funds, through other investments from city, county, and state, this is the moment that many of us have been working on for years, if not decades. So, I really stand in support of this plan, look forward to working with all of the other stakeholders that have been involved, the new players, the new small businesses. Just as an example, we launched events there at Twenty-Fourth and Lake that started with a thousand people, now we have five thousand plus coming at various events and activities. So, with a better infrastructure, the work that the BID is doing and others to improve the streetscape, all of these components add together to make North Omaha what it should be. So, very much in support from a nonprofit side, very much in support from a small business side. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Willie. Any other proponents? Are there any others, come on down, are there any others that are gonna speak, please raise your hand, so we, I get an idea who's left, okay.
Don't worry, I'll keep it real short. Willie Stennis, property owner at twenty-three fifteen North Twenty-Fourth Street and twenty-three eleven North Twenty-Fourth Street. Again, I'll keep it real short, just to reiterate my support for all the various things that they stated. You know, growing up, I've always heard that African-American talent kind of leaves Omaha to seek opportunities elsewhere. This plan gives me encouragement, as someone that grew up in North Omaha, live in North Omaha, I'm someone that wants to stay and see the development happen, so again, I support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it for the proponents, any others wanna speak? Okay, seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Before we hear from Eric, I just want to say, we had quite a discussion upstairs in our pre-meeting about the agenda item number five and six with North Omaha, and I got a kick out of the pastor that came up, said I've seen a lot of plans over the last forty-five years, because I was kinda saying something of the same thing, but with Cali and Bridget Hadley, Sidney Franklin, the excitement was certainly in the room, they feel that the private sector is opening up businesses, spending their money in North Omaha and gonna change that area. So, the excitement that all of you have for this revitalization project was shared with Sidney, Bridget, and Cali, so it sounds like it's going in the right direction. Any other comments or questions before we?
Eric? Yeah, I don't need to add much, of course you've heard, you know, great feedback and input from the public, and, you know, I just wanna just reiterate that, you know, there's been an enormous amount of public engagement, community engagement, from former staff, of course Manny and Chris, to current staff, Kelly and Mariana and others, so just really appreciative and look forward to seeing many of you who came up and spoke back before this podium for future projects and development, so let's keep this thing moving, staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion, a second, Debbie, will you please record the vote?
So, Delongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven zero.
Agenda item number six, case C three dash twenty-one dash two eighty-eight. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha requests approval of the Twenty-Fourth and Lake redevelopment plan. Location, an area generally bound by Maple Street on the north, Franklin and Clark Streets on the south, Twentieth Street on the east, and Highway seventy-five on the west, and Cali, are you presenting again?
Uh huh. Good afternoon again, Kelly Johnston Dorsey with the City Planning Department. So, I think you've seen, as per the last case, there's a lot going on in this area, there are a lot of stakeholders who are extremely engaged and we're so thankful for that. Because we heard this and saw this within the community and so many different things happening, we saw the need to create this redevelopment plan. So, Nebraska Community Development Law kind of outlines what makes a redevelopment plan, and then aligns tools with that to assist with redevelopment. So, our first step was we engaged with the stakeholders, and you've heard from many of them today, and put a plan together to see what is all on the horizon, and there's so much on the horizon in the next two to five years. There's also a lot of city-owned property within this area, and understanding what is on the horizon in these two to five years, the city then can make better decision on how to dispose of our properties. How can we assist and make it easier for these private and nonprofit developers who are in action right now? So, we've heard, probably hasn't happened often in the past, but we've had a lot recently of city-owned property receiving multiple different requests, of people interested in our property, and with this redevelopment plan, we know who is doing what, how we can best assist, and who is best in a position to receive that city land. We can also help with zoning changes, so it is more in compliance before we transfer property to these developers, and then this redevelopment plan I'll say is a lot different than previous, which has then a lot of it, the city's not making promises, there's no city funding with this redevelopment plan, it's a private sector, private developers, nonprofits as well, who are proposing so many great projects that will be on the horizon. So, again, I'll keep it short, available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you Kelly. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Hey Manny again, twenty-five fourteen North Twenty-Fourth Street, and definitely a proponent, but this is also where I get to have a little bit of fun, because I just wanted to point out that this development plan was also mentioned in the North Omaha Recovery Plan that Senator Justin Wayne and Trill McKinney put out, I believe, yesterday. So, I just wanted to call that out and also highlight that that also makes this even more important, because that has funding attached to it, or potential funding attached to it. Other than that, I have an idea that I would like to share with everyone here, as far as the development plan, and I'm gonna put this over here. Talking with a lot of folks in the community right now, parking is not an issue, and if you know me, I'm not a big parking advocate, ever, really, but what I'll say is, with everything going on and potentially happening, at some point will be a need for parking and need to do it in a, I don't know, planned-out way, and I'm just gonna throw out that the historic street car barn is owned by the city, it's basically a giant parking lot, or I call it a junkyard sometimes, but I won't go into that, but that could be an opportunity for the future, if it was an option to open up some of that space for parking for events at NOMA, the Union, as the area grows and so on and so forth, so, thank you.
Thank you Manny. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Levanya Goodwin, thirty-one sixteen North Twenty-Fourth Street, just north of this redevelopment plan, but also the board president of the North Twenty-Fourth Street Business Improvement District, and this is an unprecedented time for North Twenty-Fourth Street. The alignment, the engagement, we really appreciate how the city has gone over and above to be available, to reach out to the community, to make sure that, you know, the true stakeholders in the area understand the opportunity here. And so, this distribution of land or opportunity to acquire land through the city, and the projects and the programs like North Omaha Music and Arts, like North End Tele Services opportunity, and so many more are really the, now we're seeing the, beyond the seedlings, it's emerging, of what we hope to be a thriving, not only business district, but, you know, a thriving area where residents and churches and people can come and thrive on North Twenty-Fourth Street. So, we just want to say that the BID, that represents two-hundred-and-forty property owners in the North Twenty-Fourth Street area from Meredith to Coming, are in full support of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Hello. I'm Dana Murray, I am the executive director of NOMA, North Omaha Music and Arts, formerly known as Loves Jazz. I have a unique perspective.
Need an address Dana, I'm sorry.
Twenty-five ten North Twenty-Fourth Street.
Thank you.
Northwest corner. I have a unique perspective, I'm a musician, I'm from South Omaha, I left here when I was nineteen, went to Berklee College Music and Ball, then moved to New York. I've lived in a lot of, I guess, community of traditionally underserved communities, and what they all share is divestment, you know, and as we're speaking about how do you move forward, well, you don't move forward, obviously, without investment, right? Now, I'm developing an art academy, art being something that will be a byproduct of something greater, like giving kids tools to succeed, creating critical thinkers, creating problem solvers, building frames of mind that are accountable, all the things that, all the building blocks for a successful human, right? I would love to see with all of this planning that's beautiful, I'm obviously in support of it all, what brought me into this is it somehow seemed like a different mindset now. Now, you could attribute that to the times we're living in, you could, you know, attribute that to, okay, it's about time, it's taken so long we've gotten here. It seems like people are on the same page. As we're doing that, all these things we're planning for the adults and for the communities, let's be very cognizant of the young people, right? I was once one of the young people that heard a lot of these kind of conversations before I left, right? A lot of the, I guess, music history that was so prevalent back in the forties and fifties that people take pride in, in North Omaha, I didn't benefit from any of that, because that had been long gone. Any of the legacy or symbolism that that carried, and I'm fifty now, right? So, that was long gone when I came through. I've been educating here long enough to see kids from middle school go up through high school, go to college, have families of their own. It happens real fast, unless we are providing something for these younger people to use in their life as effective measures of getting point A to B, then it's very easy to be right back in this position years later. So, I'd like to thank you, thank everybody involved, but let's be very cognizant of the young people and make sure that we're giving them the tools to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you Dan. Any other proponents?
Cheryl Weston, one eight one one Immett Street, Omaha, Nebraska. This plan will pass too, but I just wanted to say again, it's really important. We talked about displaced owners' property and so forth, well, hopefully, as Manny mentioned, I've looked at that recovery plan that Senator McKinney and Senator Justin Wayne put out yesterday, hopefully that there is a great potential of funding coming in. So, I hope that they will remember in this plan and with the city, is that they will work together to see that individuals from North Omaha who want to be part of this great plan, this great opportunity, don't forget them, don't let it all be outsiders coming in, don't let it all be developers from wherever. Hopefully that they will look back and say, okay, we made this great, because we wanted to, people who wanted to stay here, people who wanted to encourage, as this young man said, what he saw when he was growing up and now what he sees and wants to do with young people, reach out to them. Hopefully that they'll be able to work together, the city and others who are involved in this, in this property, make sure that we, who are part of this area, have been here most of our lives, want to stay in this area, that we will benefit as well. So, I am a proponent of it, just keep those things in mind. Thank you.
Thank you Cheryl. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Brenda Council, sixteen fifteen Worth Street, and I'm here in support of not only the North Twenty-Fourth Street Development Plan, but I could have come up as well for Forever North, since they combine area, they cover the same area. I'm a longtime resident of North Omaha, I grew up in North Omaha when North Twenty-Fourth Street was the street of dreams. I listened to Pastor Lassiter talk about his forty-five years here, I've spent my entire life here, and I can count far too many redevelopment plans that went nowhere. In fact, I was reminded as I was sitting back there, in nineteen ninety-two, Renaissance Two Thousand came before this planning board. Some of you may remember Renaissance Two Thousand. Great plan, great ideas, and the difference between Renaissance Two Thousand and the North Twenty-Fourth Development Plan, redevelopment plan, is I can actually see progress already occurring in accordance with this plan. North End Tele Marketing, the work that is being done there, the work that's being done by Mr. Barney and his wife and partners on the Carver Financial Services Organization, all of that work contemplates revitalizing a community and a district that once was the street of dreams, and offered every opportunity and service that people needed, and if you look at these plans, all of them entail housing development as well as commercial development, we need to restore that part of North Twenty-Fourth Street. We need to restore that part of North 24th Street, the commercial vibrance of what once was a thriving business community. So, I urge your support of not only the North 24th Street Redevelopment Plan, but like I said, I could have been up here as well to speak in support of Forever North. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Okay, seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments?
Yeah, I just make a comment, you know, both Brenda and Cheryl and Pastor talked about, you know, the different plans that have been around. And, you know, lots of people have visions, lots of people create plans, but a plan doesn't become anything other than a piece of paper unless that vision gets engaged, and gets engaged with people. And once the people are engaged in it, they can see that that vision can be a reality, and that's when they're gonna invest their time, treasure, and talents to a project like that. And it's so encouraging to see this happening right now. And I just commend all the people, just the number of testimonies we've had here in support of it is so encouraging that it has the momentum that it needs to keep going, and I commend everybody involved for all that.
Yeah, and I'll just follow up with that David, agree with everything. And I know this is gonna be successful, and you know how I know this is gonna be successful? Because you're all here today telling the stories, there's a great amount of passion, you're engaged in what's happening, which is fantastic, so much enthusiasm, optimism, pride, I mean, pick an adjective to use, positive adjective. That's how I know it's gonna be successful. There's been some great testimony of leadership here today, really has been, and that's how I know it's gonna succeed. So I am optimistic, I am enthused about what's happening in this area of Omaha, and I'm gonna vote to support it, obviously. So, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Eric?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not gonna add a lot. Of course, I just, you know, this redevelopment plan, it can really provide some tangible toolbox, basically tools in the toolbox that the city can utilize in. We think it's a great step forward and just reiterate what I had said last time with Forever North. So, staff recommends approval.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
K?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Through 7-0.
Okay, moving on, we're gonna take Agenda Items Number 7, 8, 13, and 22. We're gonna take all those together. Agenda Item Number 7, Case C3-22-28, Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from office, commercial, and low-density residential to high-density residential. Location: northwest of Saddle Creek Road and Pacific Street. Agenda Item Number 8, Case C3-21-318, Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the CIP Saddle Creek TIF redevelopment project plan. Location: northwest of Saddle Creek Road and Pacific Street. Agenda Item Number 13, Case C10-22-8, C10-22-29, C12-22-10, applicant, Commercial Investment Properties, request preliminary plat approval of CIP Saddle Creek, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from R4 and GI to R7 and CC, along with approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district for a portion of the property. Location: northwest of Saddle Creek Road and Pacific Street. And Number 22, Agenda Item Number 22, Case C11-22-9, applicant, Commercial Investment Properties, request approval of a planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location: northwest of Saddle Creek Road and Pacific Street. Mr. Jobin, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant with me today. From the applicant is Randy Chevallé. And then also with me today is Eric Williams and Dan Belize of Olson. They're the consulting engineers on this particular project. Then also with me is Dave Johnson of Studio 951, who's the architect on this particular project. As you can see from the introduction, there's a whole lot going on here with this particular case, with the amendment to the future land use map, and then the redevelopment plan and the preliminary plat and rezoning, as well as the PUR. So, since all of these items are really so integrated and interrelated, I'm gonna probably be flipping, you know, between the issues, but I think the way I'll probably address them to make some sense here of organization is probably, I will be talking about the preliminary plat and the rezoning first, along with the PUR kind of second, and then the redevelopment plan, third, and that's where Mr. Seaton of the Planning Department might jump in, or at least add after my full presentation to that part of the case. And then I think lastly, I'll talk about the amendment to the future land use map because all of this ties into why we're going to request, or why we are requesting the amendment to the future land use map to do this particular project. So, with that, I think it's important to understand the existing conditions and just in general how this site relates to the surrounding properties. So, I can zone in a little bit. So what's outlined in black is the actual site, and so you have Saddle Creek along the east, you have Mayberry on the north, and then you have 49th Street that's gonna be vacated as part of this plat. And then you have 49th Avenue here, which is currently right-of-way, but it's undeveloped. And so, this is the outer boundary of the entire property. So, also, I went out there off of 49th Street and I took some photographs because I think it's important that you'll see later as to how this kind of relates to each other and why this is a challenging site, but yet a good one for this type of development. It falls fairly dramatically. I'm up on 49th Street, which is actually a paved street, but that's the street that will be vacated, and this is looking east, and the multifamily project that you have to the east there is the BOSS that we did a number of years ago. I was actually involved in that with the developer. So this is kind of a, maybe not different developer, but almost a sister property or project right across the street from it. This is a little bit further to the south on 49th Street, kind of at the end, which is currently a, just a dead end. And so, you can see here how it drops fairly dramatically. As you go from the north and the west, it kind of drops about 20 feet in elevation going both to the east and to the south. This is a photograph of 49th Avenue. This is actually dedicated right-of-way today. It has been for 100 years, but the street has never actually been constructed, so it's just been used really as green space, but it is public right-of-way and always has been. So with that, and I guess I'd get back to the area that we're talking about here. In total, it's about 4.54 acres, so it's not a large site, so it's about four and a half acres. Again, you can see here, there's 11 total parcels that are included within the boundary of this. There's forest green landscaping, there's United Rental here, and these are industrial properties currently are used as industrial properties. There's a few vacant lots, and then there's some, also some single-family residential houses that will be raised, and then there's one six-plex apartment that is situated along Mayberry here that will also be raised to make way for this particular project. As far as the current zoning, just to understand that as well, this is the current zoning that's in place today, and as you can see to the north, you've got Community Commercial with a major commercial corridor overlay district. To the east, you have R8 with the major commercial corridor overlay district and PUR, that's actually the BOSS there. To the south, you have General Industrial, and to the west, you have R4, R5, and some General Industrial as well. So, the way these zoning, the way these properties were zoned and platted, you know, 100 years ago, there wasn't the same kind of master plan that we have today as far as how we develop property. So you get this mishmash of zoning right next to each other, with residential being right next to industrial, industrial being next to commercial and residential, and so that's what you're seeing here. The site that was being redeveloped today is comprised of General Industrial, R4 here and here, and there's actually, believe it or not, a General Industrial property right here in the middle. So, it's a mishmash of zoning classifications all off of Saddle Creek. So, that gets us to the proposed development. This is not the most clear, but you can see what we're proposing here. We're proposing to subdivide the four and a half acres into three lots. You've got Lot 1, 2, and 3. I'll primarily be talking about Lot 1 because that's the multifamily housing project. Lot 2 and 3 are proposed commercial uses, most likely a credit union on Lot 2, and maybe a coffee shop or a fast food restaurant on Lot 3 here to the south. And I'll talk about this later, but we're providing a public access easement off of Saddle Creek that goes through the property and makes a connection to 49th Avenue. Everyone can use that, whether you're coming off of Saddle Creek or you're coming off 49th Avenue, you have the ability to come through with a public access easement and make your way to either Saddle Creek or make your way to the neighborhood to 49th Street. Which, that gets me really to Lot 1, and this is the site plan, but I've got a lot of other pretty pictures and colored photographs and elevations, et cetera, that I'm gonna share with you. But this, right here, is the multifamily housing project, and that's situated again on Lot 1. Lot 1 is on the southeast corner of 49th Avenue and Mayberry. So right here's Mayberry, here's 49th Street. The proposed zoning request is from, to R7, from R4 and GI, to R7 to make way for this particular project. With the rezoning, we have the PUR, one of the agenda items. And the PUR really is to make way for innovative design at this particular location with the, you look at the topography and the irregular shape of the property, and it's kind of the ongoing developments and changes of use along Saddle Creek, you, you know, and the wide variety of uses, I guess, within the vicinity. You really need the PUR to make way for projects like this. So, we're seeking, and they're not major modifications or waivers that we're looking at. One, for example, is modifying the front yard setback from 35 feet to 8 feet along 49th Street to make way for an entryway, and I'll get to the elevations in a little while, but the idea was to have that waiver so the, more of the rowhouse-looking part of the apartment project looks more residential in character, and so we'll get into that a little bit. So that's the reason for that waiver, and that waiver was also to move the buildings closer to the street, again, to make it more of a rowhouse feel and more residential in character to fit in with the neighborhood to the west and to the north as you get into the residential. There's a buffer yard reduction on the north side from 30 feet to 20 feet. Again, it's really just to accommodate the elevation, the grade change, and also to make it more compatible with the residential development to the west and to the north. Then there is one side area unit reduction to allow for 633 square feet per unit versus 1,000 in the R7. The idea was not to go to the R8, but across the street is R8, so it's not terribly different. It's just not going to the full R8 zoning classification to allow for the number of units, so it's not, it won't allow for the number of units that would be otherwise permitted in R8. It's something less than that, but it's more than R7, so that's the other part of the PUR that we're seeking today. So, if you have questions about that. And the last one was just impervious coverage is increased from 70% maximum to 72%, so there's not a lot there as far as the waiver request. So, get to the multifamily project itself. This is kind of a view from the northwest looking southwest. Again, here you have your more residential in-character part of the development, and again, I have other elevations we're gonna go through. This shows the courtyard in the middle with the various amenities. There's a swimming pool, there's the clubhouse, outdoor amenities, grilling area, the typical amenities that you have in a Class A apartment facility. As far as the unit mix, there's 195 total units, so we have 80 studio apartments, we have 67 one-bedrooms, and 48 two-bedrooms being called out for this particular project. The monthly rents, this is a conventional finance project, so the rents are market-rate rents. For the studios, they're looking at $1,064 per month. For the one-bedrooms is about $1,320 per month, and for the two-bedrooms, they're looking at about $1,700 per month for rents. So, I talked earlier about the site and the amount of fall that you have from the north to the south and from the west to the east. So this shows the elevations, and you may not be able to see the distances, but I can read those out to you and call out what they are. But this first elevation is the north elevation, this is the one along Mayberry. And so, this is a combination of three and four stories. You know, notice that the three stories are on the western side of the building, that's the part that's more closely related to the residential housing development to the west. So you kind of step up from there, you have three stories, then you step up to four stories as you head to the east. So the height, and this is at the peak, we didn't measure the height as the planning department measures the height, which is the midpoint, you know, to the roof. We actually are showing you what the peak is. It's important to note that R7 allows for 75 feet maximum height. We're under the 75 feet by far on all of the corners. I guess on one corner, we get a little close, not to 75 feet, but close to 70. I'll show that to you in a minute, but that's primarily because of the grade change. So again, at the peak of the roof on the west side of the development with the three stories, you have about 47 feet in height to the peak, to the top. And as you move to the east, it gets to 48 feet in height along the northern side of the development. As you get to the east elevation, and maybe it's more appropriate to go to the west elevation first, and then we'll get back to the east and the south. So the west elevation is down here. Again, we worked a lot with the planning department as far as the architectural style and feel of the west side of the elevations. You can't necessarily see it here, but there's quite a bit of articulation. This is the entryway that I talked about that steps out, that there's a variance here, and you can't really see it here, but it comes out to 8 feet to the right-of-way. And then, there's two kind of setbacks, if you will, from the building that really breaks up the building, and I've got other, if you wanna see it, like on a floor plate, I've got those as well. But the idea was, in working with the planning department, is to really break up the west facade by having the more rowhouse feel, then a step back between the rowhouses, then the rowhouses, and then again, a step back, and then the rowhouses again. So that's kind of the finished west elevation. So the height on the finished west elevation is 50 feet, but that 50 feet is really to the transitional roof, which is higher than the actual peaks of the rowhouses, which I believe are between 45 and 48 feet. So that 50 feet's really only at that location here and only at that location here, and that's primarily to step down and go into the more, I guess, commercial feel of the building. But again, all this was, we've been working with the planning department for almost 12 months on just this entire site and how it's supposed to look and feel and the design of it. So, you get to, and again, on that side, the west side, I should say, is all three-story. So it's three-story, on the north side, it's three-story, four-story, and then if you get to, maybe the south side is more appropriate to take first before the east side, and that is this elevation here. And again, you have the three stories here, which is the west elevation, then you kind of step into the middle, and that gets to five stories all the way across. So, the west side is about three to five stories, and that includes the parking garage that we'll talk about in a little bit that's here, and then of course, you have the clubhouse and all the amenities and leasing facility here on this particular corner. So the height, remember, because it drops so dramatically, the height at this location is 47 feet in height on the building, and then as you go east, it gets- And then as you go east, it gets to 63 feet in height on the east side. But that's the side that's completely away from the residential development of the west and the north. So we're trying to step it down and make the east side really more compatible with what's across the street versus what's to the west and the north, which is more residential in character. So that was the idea behind it. And then we get to the last elevation, which is the east elevation here. Oh, I should say also, I'm sorry, back to the south elevation. Here's one of the entryways into the parking garage, which is 280 parking stalls on two stories. There's 140 parking stalls on each floor plate, and so it's two stories. So the, there's an ingress and egress on the south side elevation. And then you get to the east elevation here, and this is the, really the largest elevation, and that's one of the access points here into the parking garage for the apartment complex. And there, everything ranges between five and six stories as you go south to north just because of the fall of the property and the way it's situated and the way it will be graded out. So on the east side, you have about 68 feet as the high point of the entire development. And again, that's the furthest point away from the residential neighborhood to the north and to the west, you know, being careful to make sure that really that side is the more commercial look with the two commercial lots along Saddle Creek. And then as you go south, it gets to 63 feet in height here at this location on the east side of the building. So again, as I indicated, we've been working with the planning staff for quite some time on the material choices. Everything here, not only is it a TIF project, but it's also a major commercial corridor overlay district, so the urban design code applies. So we will have to design the buildings and use the materials that are required by the urban design code. And we've been working with city staff, and I think we're pretty close on those, but they're the traditional material choices for Class A apartments within a major commercial corridor or using a TIF project where you have the urban design code applying. So there's, I think there's brick and there's metal panels and there's wood panels and the glass and et cetera. So it's kind of the typical material choices that you see. Again, on the parking, we talked about that. There's 277 off-street spaces required. We're actually providing 293, so we exceed the parking requirement. Again, the two-level parking inside the building itself for 280 spaces. And then there's, we're showing 15 parking spaces on-street on 49th Avenue on the east side of 49th Avenue, and then 15 spaces on the west side of 49th Avenue. And I think we talked about the commercial lots. Again, I think what's being proposed there is, you know, approximately on Lot 2, a 3,140 square foot building that could be a bank or a credit union, and then we're just calling out, and there's no specific uses that we have lined up. Then we're calling out like a coffee shop or a fast food restaurant on Lot 3 for about 2,500 square feet along Saddle Creek. And again, being a major commercial corridor, the urban design code applies, and they'll have to be designed accordingly. with that, I'll get into the public improvements that are being installed with this particular project. And there's a number of them. We're, again, you saw 49th Avenue being dedicated right away, but green space. That will be constructed along the frontage, we know now, and that's shown here. So 49th Avenue is being shown as constructed. It's currently shown as stopping at the end of our frontage and at the south part of the development where the access, public access easement comes through. We are going to work with the Public Works Department on a partnership to extend 49th Avenue to Pacific Street and then Pacific Street to 50th Street to make that continuation. So it's a more fluid street all the way through and as opposed to just coming here and then going north. So we're, that's going to have to have probably a little cost-sharing arrangement in order to make that work. But, so we're working with Public Works on that. There's new sidewalks, there's street lighting, there's storm sewer improvements. There's a power line that runs through the development that's going to have to be relocated at a pretty significant cost. So there's a lot of TIF-eligible expenses here and why TIF is needed because of the public improvements that are required, site work that's required, as well as the relocation of that power line. So that gets me to the TIF part of this project, which the TIF request is $5,165,000. The total construction cost is about $44 million. The TIF-eligible expenses exceed the TIF request. They're about $7,236,605. But that doesn't include the power line relocation or the continuation or extension to 49th Ave or the continuation of Pacific Street from 49th Avenue to 50th Street. So those actually now have increased between the time we made the TIF application and where we are today. So the financing is there currently. Again, we talked about the public improvement costs. They're about $321,000. But again, that doesn't include the extension of 49th Avenue or the extension of Pacific Street from 49th Avenue to 50th. As far as the existing valuation, it's about $2.1 million with a tax revenue of about $45,000 annually from what's existing out there. That's the base year valuation. What is being proposed here, the projected value of this project is about $26,625,000. So the revenue that's expected to be generated on full build-out with this particular case is $574,802 a year. So obviously, a significant increase in the revenue with this particular development. Obviously, job creation and all the other things that come with this type of project. So that gets me to the last item, is the amendment to the future land use map. this is an exhibit that the, there we go. This is an exhibit that the planning department put together as part of your packet, and I think it was a good one. This shows the existing future land use map, showing low-density residential housing on this side, and then, of course, showing office commercial along Saddle Creek. But again, when you look at flipping back to this, even the existing zoning's not consistent with the existing comp plan or future land use map because you've got general industrial, you've got general industrial here that's mixed in with the R4. So currently, the property as zoned doesn't even meet the requirements of the future land use map. So with this development, we're requesting to change the future land use map to allow for high-density residential housing here. We're not really changing anything along the Saddle Creek corridor. But again, with the rezoning and everything else, this will make it a more consistent zoning in this particular area. The rationale for the change, we believe that general industrial and existing R4 zoning's really not appropriate because, you know, those uses are simply not compatible. They might have been way back when in the day, they just aren't today. So you don't, you almost would never see general industrial being next to single-family residential housing today if you were trying to rezone this new. We don't think the property is viable for industrial uses any longer. Most of the buildings that are there are obsolete and are in need of redevelopment. We think the entire site really is underutilized. There's a number of vacant lots, as you saw. 49th Avenue doesn't even exist, and we think that the vacation of 49th Street is appropriate. The mix of zoning as it sits today really is an impediment to the redevelopment of this property and the future land use map. We looked at the overall goals, and one of the things that you have to show in order to get an amendment to the future land use map is that there's other goals that are impacted or fostered by the proposed amendment. In this particular case, we think there's a number of them. We think the, it's the approval of the overall aesthetics along Saddle Creek, also even along the residential development to the west and to the north. We believe that the streetscape will be vastly improved also along Saddle Creek because right now, if you looked, I didn't have any photographs. I tried, but it's, Saddle Creek's busy. So I tried to get a photograph of Saddle Creek, and it was just, I couldn't pull in anywhere to get a good picture, but, I mean, the sidewalks are right on the street. I mean, it's like the sidewalk, the curb, and then fencing for the industrial uses, and it's just not very pedestrian-friendly. So with this particular development, the streetscape of Saddle Creek will be dramatically improved. This will allow for the more effective utilization for multifamily housing and office and commercial uses, eliminating the obsolete industrial uses that are along Saddle Creek, obviously increasing the tax base of the city as we talked before. And again, one of the master plan goals is to provide diversity of housing for the citizens of Omaha and, of course, job creation. There was a market study shown, we did a market study, and it showed really that the occupancy rates in this entire area are between 94 and 98%, and primarily due to UNMC and the innovative innovation campus and everything else that the Med Center's doing, this area is going to explode as far as growth, is the way we look at it. So it's also very close to the transit-oriented development, the TOD district. So we believe that this amendment to the master plan is really, furthers the goals of the master plan by allowing this property to be redeveloped. And I always say with redevelopment, redevelopment begets redevelopment in this particular case. So I think you'll see kind of this whole corridor improve in its aesthetics and look. So that gets me to the last, which we did have a number of conversations with the neighbors to the north and the west. We had two neighborhood meetings. One was a webinar. Essentially, we couldn't find a physical location to meet because of COVID. We sent out notices like the planning department does as far as 300 feet to the surrounding area. We had about 30 people in attendance and representatives of the city were there, Public Works and Planning as well, and Councilmember Begley was there on the webinar. We had another public meeting that was actually called by the neighbors on December 28th, and I was not there, but representatives of the development team were there. And I've had a number of calls that I've taken directly on my cellphone, which I was happy to do, talking about and trying to answer questions and everything else. So we've had lots of conversations with the neighbors to the west and the north, and I know some of them still don't like the project necessarily. We'll hear from them, I'm sure, today. So I'm happy to answer questions from you as well as respond to any opposition from them. We appreciate the favorable recommendations from the planning department. We find them all acceptable. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Don, did you want to add anything or do your presentation now? Don Seaton, City Planning, on behalf of the planning department and the project. And I'm going to be speaking solely to the TIF aspect of the project. Looking over my notes, I'm going to be very brief because Mr. Jobin was very thorough in his description of the project. But I would note, the total project investment in the area is a little bit more than $44 million. I'd reiterate that they're asking for $5,156,000 in TIF support. The project does comply with the goals of the city's master plan. We're adding density in an underutilized area, underutilized site. We're improving aesthetics along a major roadway corridor. The financial structure of the project has been reviewed by the city's TIF committee and found that the use of TIF is needed and justified for the project. With that, a lot of public improvements as well, including the construction of a platted street that has not been constructed at all, been platted right away for its entire existence. Anyway, we ask for your approval.
Okay, thank you, Don. All right, any other proponents wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, are there any opponents wishing to speak? Okay, you can come forward. If all of you that want to speak, if you want to come down into the front row here, it'll help speed things up for everybody. We'll need your name and address, please.
I'm Jordan Scoopian. I live at Jordan Scoopian.
Okay.
I live at 4699 Pacific Street to the east. And I didn't buy into this neighborhood to see the apartmentification of Saddle Creek. I live catty-corner from the Boss Apartments, and while that is an okay development, I don't want to look out from my house and see just a slew of six-story apartment buildings. I looked at the zoning and the master plan for this area, and some things that I think that this property doesn't address is the preservation of historic structures. We have low-income, we have moderate and low-income apartment buildings that are of good use, and they have, they continue to have good use. We have some houses that are going to be torn down. I had a retaining wall built by Forest Green. I actually walked down to them and paid them with a check, and I thought that was great. I love my neighborhood, and I love its walkability and its eclectic use of different businesses. I like the industrial feel of it. This really makes me wonder if the city is just going to piecemeal change the zoning of every single business along this corridor, and soon this neighborhood won't have anything but six-story apartment buildings. I like to visit O'Levers. I like to play volleyball there. I sometimes have a drink there. I go down to the neighbor's bar. And I just wonder if, you know, every time a developer comes in and asks for $5 million from you guys, if you give them all that money, they just buy out all these small businesses and they create all these apartments, and it doesn't do anything for the existing homeowners that are there. Nobody who owns a single-family house wants to live next to a four-story, or from my perspective, on the other side of Saddle Creek, a six-story apartment building. I don't want to look at, I don't want to look at a building like that. Looking at the commercial buildings that you have planned, you have a plan for a bank with a drive-through with 18 parking spots. The most popular restaurant in our neighborhood, Barley, I think it's, Barrios, yeah. They only have like 10 parking spots, and they do just fine. And I, just up the street on Saddle Creek, American National Bank just built a drive-in, a drive-in bank, and it's got 20 parking spots in front of it. And I drive past that bank every day to get to work, and I only ever see like one or two cars parked in front of that bank. Up the street from there, Bank of the West just built a brand-new building. Like, how many banks do we need on this street? How many five- and six-story apartment buildings do we need on this street? I think density is a good thing. I think, I don't, I wouldn't mind living next to a two- or three-story apartment building with 10 units, five or 10 units. I don't understand why we have to cram 195 apartments into one building. I don't see how that is a good urban design and an urban fabric. I don't see this development making Saddle Creek any more walkable or desirable. I look at this building and I see that it's, it could be any building anywhere in Omaha. Whereas like the existing buildings that are there now, they could be perfectly reused and repurposed, and if people would look at those buildings and say, that's Saddle Creek. I know exactly where in the city that is. They look at these buildings, and it could be anywhere in the city. And so I think this plan needs more thought. I think it needs more interaction with residents, and not just the residents on the north and the west side of Saddle Creek, but the residents that look down onto Saddle Creek from the east. You know, just because we're across the street doesn't mean we don't matter. You know, just because we're across the street doesn't mean we don't matter. So I guess, you know, in the TIF request, they said that 95 to 98% rental occupancy for these types of buildings in our neighborhood. If, with those high occupancy rates, why do they need $5 million from you? I see that they're doing some improvements for the neighborhood, but the city could pay for those improvements. And then the school districts would get that money. And we wouldn't have all of these, all of these tax dollars just flowing to developers' pockets. And then the city having to repay those loans over five, 10, 20 years. So, I mean, if our neighborhood needs TIF financing, I would think every neighborhood needs it. Because our neighborhood is doing just fine. It's not blighted, there's no, there's, really, I haven't seen much crime or, or any blighted houses. So I just don't see why this should be, why they should be asking for TIF when they're in such a desirable neighborhood. You know, I think TIF should be, should go to neighborhoods that actually need it, where a developer is actually taking a risk by developing property. But I'm sure there's lots of other people here that are going to speak to this. But I, I just think that this project shouldn't need TIF. If it's, if it's that feasible, it shouldn't need it. And that really, I think, parts of this plan need to be re-thought out. And for all the houses and apartments that they're destroying, I'm wondering why, why we don't have any low-income housing component as part of this? Inclusionary apartments. Their apartments are 500 square feet and charging over $1,000 a month. How is the average Omaha who works at all of these local businesses supposed to afford that? I don't see why, if they, if they're asking for $5 million of TIF, why can't they provide five or 10 of these apartments at an affordable rate? You know, we talk about affordable housing. Why can't that be included in this plan? Why can't you guys ask for that? If you're giving them $5 million, why can't five or 10 of their apartments that they're destroying by destroying these 50-year-old buildings and these houses that were built 100 years ago? Why can't they provide that? I, I think you should ask for more as a planning board and, and the city should ask for more. So without, without further ado, I'm just going to let the next person speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jordan.
Good afternoon. My name is Debbie Rushlaw. My address is 1010 South 49th Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68106. Or let's just call it the green space. And Mr. Jobin, your first map was incorrect. You included part of my property in your map. So just, so as long as we get that corrected. I'm speaking as a concerned resident of our community that surrounds the proposed redevelopment. We urge you to lay over or deny the PUR CIP Saddle Creek request. While the local community may be unable to prevent redevelopment, nearly all residents in the neighborhood are completely opposed to the addition of multifamily housing for the following reasons. Increased traffic and pedestrian safety are overlooked in the PUR. Neighborhood traffic will surge during morning and evening rush hours, causing traffic issues during critical times for the existing neighborhoods. Street routes on the west side of the redevelopment will not accommodate 195-unit complex, nor the additional population. Pre-COVID estimated average daily traffic count completed in October 2018 was close to 50,000 at 50th, at Saddle Creek and Leavenworth. This plan does not accommodate fire and rescue, rescue crews, and it will slow their response time, putting lives and property at risk. This plan disregards master plan objectives and ignores the infill and redevelopment guidelines document. The building is massive and does not conform to the neighborhood. Redevelopment will burden the sewer infrastructure already running at full capacity. Saddle Creek is known for drainage issues and is unable to absorb any runoff without flooding. We feel the developers have been unfair scheduling the virtual informational neighborhood meeting the week of Christmas, resulting in low attendance and giving us little time to prepare or organize. School in the areas are already reported over capacity, and the council should not approve multifamily dwellings that create or aggravate this. Multifamily dwellings are inconsistent with the immediate neighborhood. There are several multifamily properties in close proximity that currently have many vacancies. This development will demolish two good, useful commercial buildings, five single-family homes, and one small eight-unit apartment building, not to mention many mature trees. How are they going to replace trees that we, as homeowners, planted years or generations ago? Some are as old as 60 to 70 years of age, and many were here before we were. Nothing you plant could compare to what we have now. Conservation is a big concern. Wildlife thrives in this area, and any redevelopment will destroy their habitat. Bats, including long-eared bats, owls, woodchucks, possum, hawks, turkeys, and many bird species rely on our wooded area for refuge. Many of us have worked and lived here for generations, and our livelihoods should matter. We're not afraid of change, however, we urge you to deny the proposed rezoning and TIF request. Thank you for your service and your support of our communities.
Thank you, Debbie.
You're welcome.
Any other, any others wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi there, I'm Scott Tanner, 846 South 49th. I'm corner lot, right across from us. Right where we have it, it'll be 60 feet from our house. Four stories, it's what, 75 feet, he said? So there goes our southern, southern hemisphere. Yeah, hang on here. Anyway, I've lived in this area 35 years. We maintain it, we, you know, it's a neighborhood community. As now with the meeting in September, there were three people invited to that. And they were supposed to, three people were going to wing out to everybody else. And here's what happened. One of the three people said, just forget it. Because the other third person moved out of the area. Okay. Then the meeting we had recently on the virtual, we got a little three-by-five card, no names, nothing, saying, okay, we're going to have a meeting about putting a multi-unit apartment complex in. And then you got on the virtual, you could see a few, few faces, everybody else was blacked out. You really couldn't, there was one individual, he did a lot of speaking, but you really couldn't get a good straight answer. As of the next meeting, he said, because of the COVID issues, we've had two neighborhood meetings within two weeks. We, it was just right out of the spine of us. Went up to a church, can we have a meeting here? Boom, they said, go ahead. So, I mean, we've been trying to fight, you know, this is like two weeks, so. Anyway, the plans here, you got, I mean, it's a monster. If you were to look out from across your yard and see a 75-foot building in front of you, it's not an apartment, it's a building.
Scott, where's your lot? Where's your house at? Okay, thank you.
And, I mean, it's 75 feet. You, you won't be able to see nothing. And this goes all the way down to 49th Ave. And the people west will have the same issue. Now, we went down to the, over the weekend, we went down to the Boss and looked at it, 2:00. The house is to the east of the Boss. They have no sunlight after 2:00 because of the building. Everything's in shade. So anything you like to do that you've been doing for your whole life in that general area will be gone. Gardening's gone. Mature tree's gone. They proposed putting these little trees here. A lot of them trees are only 20-year trees. They die off. Back here, where Baker's is. Now, the walkway, you guys approved that in 1988. But what used to be Festival Foods, all right? The maintain, the promises that were made for us to get their approval of Festival Foods, that kind of went away too. Because they're not, no one maintains the fence that was promised. We had the fence, but no one maintains it. And to get it maintained, it's like pulling teeth out. And that's, you know, when you talk to the city about it and your representatives, no one seemed to find nothing. Chris Chairman actually dug, dug a little deep and found the information that was promised. Now, I didn't, I forgot, I didn't have time to bring it. I just came from work. But it's, you know, it's, it's a mon, you're looking at a monster. Downsize it, whatever. But, you know, four stories, even the master plan, I believe it said something about in relative with the neighborhood, there's not one two-story house on our block. And you're going four stories? I mean, think about it. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Anyone else?
I am Colleen Tanner. I live at 846 South 49th Street, right on the corner of 49th and Mayberry. Number one, I'm asking you, the city council, to please slow this thing down because we've only had a couple of weeks to meet and get our thoughts together. I am looking on my end of this building as six stories. I am right on the corner there, and I was told it was three stories. It is turning out to be six, five to six stories.
Point to where your house is, would you please, Colleen? Okay, okay.
I'm at that curve.
Gotcha.
I think I'm asking, since this is all about Saddle Creek to Pacific, it needs to go farther down towards Saddle Creek and push farther in towards it. You know, I'm over here, so it needs to go down some towards Saddle Creek and over towards Pacific more. There's more room. Otherwise, I have that thing towering over. We're talking about the Boss. The Boss is facing Saddle Creek, right on Saddle Creek. And it has no house right next to it, right across from it. So you put six stories right in our little tiny neighborhood. Streets very narrow, parked on one side. I'm asking the city council to please either break this building down into separate buildings like that's out there now. You tell me where the size of a building is in any neighborhood in the city, because it's not. So I am pleased, asking to be pushed down towards Saddle Creek. They don't need another bank there. They can put stuff underneath the building if they want to put shops. But if you see where we're at and that thing towering over and taking my sunlight, I need sun, not for mental stability. My hobbies are yard, flowers, trees. Once again, we will bring up all of this landscape that they say will come up. I did send pictures to you all, a letter to you, which shows outside my front door, east side. And that includes the look of the Baker's, which was also promised to upkeep all of this. Everything is dead, they've never done a thing. So as far as their landscaping and all that being kept up over the number of years, we want something in writing for sure on that. I think we need more time. But the other problem we have in our area, and no one has done any street studies on this, no one has been out to see our roads, other than Jim Otis, who came into the neighborhood to offer these people. And was told that if they did not sell out, they were going to go ahead and just build the building around them and enclose them and push them out. That's extortion. So I'm just asking you to please take into consideration our little neighborhood and this monster of a building being put on top of us all. That's 49th, Mayberry, and 49th Avenue. Our streets, like I said, are one way, there's parking on one side all the way down. One car can get by, school buses, there's Amazon, UPS, and FedEx. Today, Amazon was stopped, another car trying to get by, can't, so you have to wait. There were three cars backed up. We have a lot of traffic that cuts through from 50th Street down through the neighborhood, off Leavenworth, down 49th, down Mayor, Mayberry to 50th. Lots of cut through. So all we're asking the city council is to please, I've lived there 35-plus years, and to bring this size of a building into a little tiny neighborhood right across and up on top of me, I feel is not, it's not neighborly, like they want to say. It's all about the neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Any others wishing to speak?
Good afternoon, chairman, board members. My name is Michelle Bowers. I reside at 6720 North 44th Street. And I am a property owner at 1100 South Saddle Creek Road, which is Saddle Creek and Pacific. I'm speaking on behalf of property and business owners in the immediate area. The community asked the planning board to deny these requests as our questions and concerns have not been addressed to our satisfaction. If you are unable to deny, please lay over CIP's request for 60 days to give us adequate time to proceed. Our questions and concerns are, the PUR does not adhere to the Omaha municipal, municipal code or the city council adoption of specific development standards regarding the infill and redevelopment guidelines. It does not achieve compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood pursuant to standards for infill development as adopted or amended or to implement the master plan. And the overwhelming size of the apartment building is unacceptable. Its footprint is roughly the size of Baxter Arena. Our, our second concern is can the sanitary and sewer infrastructure handle the additional population? Traffic and pedestrian safety are major areas of concern, specifically the ability for fire and rescue crews to gain access. There has been lack of transparency and community engagement. We're concerned with the wildlife habitat and green space disruption, as well as, as, has, he has spoke to the elevations, the grading and draining issues that we currently have. I actually spoke to Boss's property manager Monday, and their occupancy rate is at 89%. I called a couple other apartment complexes that are within a two-mile radius of our area, and they're at 75 to 89% occupancy rate right now. Impacted property owners and business owners received a postcard to attend a virtual meeting on December 20th, at which time the developer shared the proposed PUR. We were informed that the residential piece of the property is finalized. However, the Saddle Creek commercial piece is not finalized and could in fact look entirely different than what is on the plans. We had limited time to review and address any concerns. We then requested an onsite meeting with the developer December 28th in an attempt to voice our concerns with the current design plans. Mr. Otis and Mr. Chevalier attended on behalf of the developer. As we discussed the traffic concerns, a homeowner asked how the traffic will be redirected, and Mr. Otis acknowledged the proposed traffic route is flawed. He pointed to the commercial property south of the PUR, which would be this property right here, and, and said, phase two of the project will include bringing Pacific Street through to Saddle Creek. The homeowner then asked, are you negotiating with the owners of these properties? To which Mr. Otis replied, no, the city will take these properties for us to bring Pacific through. Again, the city will take these properties for us to bring Pacific through. Imagine my surprise when I realized the property he was pointing to is mine. I have owned and operated a business out of it for over 25 years while supporting the community. Excuse me, it's emotional. Collectively, as a group, we realize the developer is fully aware that the proposed street design will not accommodate the additional traffic. What is disturbing to us is it appears to be intentional to justify phase two of the project. The planning board has not approved the PUR, yet the developer is confident phase two will alleviate our traffic concerns. Any planned development should consider the continuing impact on the community as well as adhering to the infill and redevelopment guidelines in the master plan. Property owners and small businesses have lived and worked in the community for decades, contributing to the tax base, contributing to small businesses, and we intend to pass our property in efforts to next generations. We understand the need for community improvements. We look forward to growth. We are simply asking the planning board to either lay over or deny the PUR and TIF requests and ask the developer to design housing and traffic routes that are appropriate for the neighborhood, as well as confirm the current sewer and sanitation infrastructures will accommodate future redevelopments. We want to ensure our concerns are addressed in the beginning and not in hindsight. We want to ensure our concerns are addressed in the beginning and not in hindsight. Our livelihoods are at risk. We ask that this PUR meet the needs of the community as well as the developer. We ask that the final designs do not put an unfair burden on the city and taxpayers alike. I know my opinions are shared by many who were unable to attend this meeting or write letters due to the short notice in the holiday season. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Michelle. Any others wishing to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Melina Peterson. My address is forty-nine fifty-three Mayberry Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight one oh six. I also own property on nine-six-eight South Forty-Ninth Ave. and nine-seven-two South Forty-Ninth Ave., which I, which are considered, which I consider to be my backyard. So on this map, I have where I live and then the proposed building. As neighbors, we all agree that is our wish for Planning Board to delay their meeting regarding this development for sixty days. We still have questions like, why can't this be moved more east towards Saddle Creek? And the rent, does that include parking? Because are people wanting to pay extra for parking in the garage? The proposed building is massive in all dimensions, especially in height. We are concerned about the safety of our neighborhood children with the proposed development. The development increases that our children will no longer have a safe place to play. For example, riding a bike in the neighborhood would no longer be an option because it would not be safe due to increase in car and people traffic. The development will flood this small, four-block-wide neighborhood with over three-hundred-plus people. Should the proposed development be approved for recommendation, I have some conditions I am requesting to be added to the recommendation. Number one, a written agreement that the developer slash buyer maintains the upkeep of the new sidewalk on the west side of Forty-Ninth Ave. My upkeep is ice melt, snow removal, and mowing. Since the developer is gaining a street with parking on both sides for the tenants, there, there is no gain for me, just a financial and physical hardship of upkeeping the sidewalk, the whole block. Number two, I would like for the developer to pay and install a quality six-foot privacy fence for the entire length of the new sidewalk being installed on the west side of Forty-Ninth Ave. The fence will provide a boundary for each side, providing privacy to my family as well as to the families' backyards who live on Fiftyth Street. And as you can see, Fiftyth Street is open. We, everyone can see. And also, it will provide safety for my daughter. And number three, the developer pays for a landscape burn and trees as part of the development on the west side of Forty-Ninth Ave. Currently, when there is a hard rain, the area floods, floods. With my property sitting lower than the complex, I worry about water running into my property. The trees will also provide privacy for the other neighbors and help with the scale of the building. We all know that when starting a project, there are unexpected costs, and these expenses are minute for a successful developer like CIP, but very cumbersome for a single mother. I feel that if these conditions are met, this will help mitigate some of my concerns. While I object to the proposal development, I do understand that progress and growth needs to happen. However, a development of this size did not fit in our neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Any others?
I think I may be the last one. My name's Connor Kelly. I live at thirty-two twenty-five South Fifty-Fifth Street in Omaha. And I was going to talk about this more from just something of a professional curiosity I saw as a water resources engineer that works in this community. And a story I had, if you could turn that back on. So I had given a presentation to the Nebraska Flood Plane, the Nebraska Association of Flood Plane Managers and Stormwater Management. And I talked about a story of going to get my friend whose car flooded at Forty-Eighth and Center during the rainstorm back in August. And I had a very difficult time getting across Saddle Creek because it was a river fast flowing and carrying cars down, down Saddle Creek during that storm event. And through my work as a water resources engineer, I'm aware that new flood plane maps are coming out for Douglas County in the next month or so, and they include the addition of the Saddle Creek corridor into the special flood hazard area. So this would also include adding special flood hazard area to the subject property. And what's interesting is because there's a first-level garage in this building that is below grade, that the hundred-year flood plane map actually puts about five feet of water in the garage. So I think it needs to be done with due consideration when spending public dollars that would potentially move people into an enhanced flood risk. I think we have to be very responsible with, with development in the flood plane. And one other thing to recognize in this area is work can be done with site topography to prevent water from getting into the garage by maybe like having a high berm or something that you'd have to drive over to get into it. But the Army Corps of Engineers did a study on the Saddle Creek conduit in 2014, and they found that at Pierce, which is one road south downstream from the subject property, Saddle Creek, that conduit loses capacity, which essentially means so much water can flow in through it at one point upstream, and then less water can flow through it at points downstream. And that causes a surcharge in the pipe, which is what causes manholes to blow off and basically geysers to come out of the street. So with storm sewer systems that drain the parking garage entering into a surcharged storm sewer conduit, you'll end up with backflow and flooding even before water can get into it through surface flooding. Looking at the revised maps that will soon be issued by FEMA, you'd see that similar to this photo of this car that has about eighteen inches of water around it. On a ten-year flood on Saddle Creek, you would have two and a half feet of water in the parking garage below the building. And I think that's an undue risk and outside of the interest of the community. Because of that, I would ask the Council to stay a decision on this until the draft FEMA maps are issued and issued for public comment period in February. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Luck. I live at eight-two-four South Forty-Ninth. One of my biggest concerns outside of what everybody else has said about this being a monster building that doesn't fit in the neighborhood is the traffic. I've sent all you guys letters. I hope you have received them and read them. Just by, by the attorney's own admission, how busy Saddle Creek Street is. He said he couldn't even stop and take a picture. My concern is the traffic that, that they think is going to leave via Saddle Creek, they're not going to be able to get onto Saddle Creek at, during rush hour. They're gonna, they're gonna back up. The cars are gonna back up, and they're gonna go through the neighborhood. They're gonna come, they're gonna come back up to Forty-Ninth Ave, over to, over to Mayberry and down Forty-Ninth Street to Elevenworth. I sent you the dimensions of what that street is with cars parked on it. I mean, you're basically swapping paint when two cars pass by. It's just not, it's just not feasible. And when you try to do two hundred cars a day during, during rush hour, we won't even be able to back out of our driveways to go to work. I just ask that you guys take a good, hard look at the effects of this kind of traffic on these small, narrow neighborhood streets. And then I have a question for the developers as well. Where will the construction entrance be located? And where do you plan to route the construction traffic, specifically dump trucks, concrete trucks, and semi-tractor trailers? Again, it's not, these streets aren't even, aren't even big enough for two cars, let alone a bunch of construction traffic. I, this, this is a bad plan, and I, I hope you guys take a good, hard look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good afternoon. My name is Paige Rushlaw. I live at nine-seven-three South Fiftieth Avenue, about a block or so away from the proposed development here. I was not, I didn't have anything prepared. I wasn't planning to speak, so forgive me. I just kind of wrote this while I was sitting there. But I felt compelled to while listening to the previous requests regarding the Forever North and Twenty-Fourth Street development, because this is the exact opposite of that. The entire neighborhood surrounding the Forever North development is in support of it, even excited about it. But looking at this development, not one neighborhood resident is in support of it for so many reasons, obviously. This developer has not been working with the community at all. As was mentioned before, we were not even informed that this was really in the works until less than one month ago. Yet the developer just said that they've been working with the planning department for a whole year on this project. It's very saddening to hear that there are actually developers out there, like the Forever North Housing, that really care about neighborhood engagement in their project. But then we are dealing with developers that are essentially trying to pull the wool over our eyes, it feels. Another thing, my parents' property, or my parents' whose property straddles the non-existent Forty-Ninth Avenue, which by the way is non-existent because it is all green area that has been cared for by property owners for decades. They were not once approached or informed that there's a phase two that would literally place a busy city street directly in the middle of their property. Please take these concerns into consideration when hopefully denying these requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Any others?
My name is Morris Peterson, and I live at nine-seven-one South Fiftieth Street. And I was born and raised, I'm sixty years old on that property. And what's weird is I wasn't going to say anything either, and I'm hearing Paige and I, just the difference today I got to see from the Forever North project, how a community backs that project so much. And a developer that works with them, and they want them to be a part of the community. And then yet, on the other side, we're dealing with, we don't want this project, and developers don't want to work with us. And how the money, you know, to me, a lot of things are about money, especially when it comes to this sort of stuff, and how that five million dollars could be used in the North Omaha community. I work for a Biden network. We are located at Forty-Fifth and Bedford. We deal with the inner city a lot. We, to see a project like this where the money for this TIF that's basically our tax money being used something that apparently no one wants, where it could be used for a project that everyone wants that could serve the community so well. And I'd be in disservice for not saying something here. And you know, like I said, I was born and raised there. I'm sixty years old. My parents bought that house seventy-some years ago when Saddle Creek was actually a creek, and that was a dairy farm. And we like, I sit in my backyard every day, and it's seven oh three in the morning, in the summer morning, I can watch the sunrise. I like seeing it rise at seven oh three in the morning. I don't want to see a house and see the sunrise at ten forty-five in the morning because of the size of this row houses. I like seeing trees. I like it dark when it gets night. I don't want to see streetlights. I like to see stars. A lot of us do here in this area. And, you know, to a community that doesn't want that, to a community that would love to have the money for that, I just think that's something that needs to be looked at. Where is your money more well-spent? And this, which there's apartments, if you look in that five-mile radius, there are probably nine of them apartments, all identical. And, you know, they talk about the occupancy. If you really looked at the occupancy, are they really that high? I don't know. All I know is a lot of the parking spots are not filled. And yet, we got a North Omaha community that would die for an extra five million dollars to be spent down there. And for a man that works down there would love to see that happen. But, you know, I'm just glad you guys let me speak, and thank you for your time.
All right, Morris. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Did you want to talk about TIF before we move on? There's been some misconception about TIF and how it works. And I've asked Eric if he would take a couple of minutes.
Yeah, I could just give a brief summary, and Don can back me up if, if need be. So in order for a project to be approved for TIF tax increment financing, it first has to be an approved community redevelopment area, CRA, such as this project is in. Many portions of, specifically Eastern Omaha is in, South Omaha, North Omaha, Downtown, Midtown, Old Millard, Old Elkhorn, among other areas. So basically, when state law is set up, there are certain criteria and thresholds that have to be met for a project to be eligible for TIF financing. And when we, when we look at a specific project, staff reviews eligible TIF expenses, okay? The city is not giving any funds. There's no, there's no money given from the City of Omaha. Basically, it is a privately-backed loan from, you know, a private bank or whoever bank is issuing the note to the developer. But the eligible expenses need to be approved by, you know, city staff, the TIF committee, Planning Board, and ultimately City Council. The way that the base valuation works is, an existing project as it exists today, the taxes that are currently paid, property taxes that go to the taxing entities such as school districts or other, you know, this building commission receives a portion to run city offices. There are several, you know, different, you know, libraries and things like that that receive funding from property taxes. The base is continued to be paid as it exists today. The increment or the increased valuation based on the project, the funds by that new increase are to pay back that loan. Once the TIF loan is paid off, typically it's a fifteen-year period. There is now some that are twenty-year. They can also be paid off early. Once that is paid off, those increased valuation property taxes now go out to those regular taxing bodies such as the school districts, as I mentioned. So I don't know if that is the answer you're looking for. Beyond that, I'd probably need to defer to Don or Jennifer or somebody who's more advanced. But Morris had mentioned that, you know, perhaps this would be taken away from a project, you know, elsewhere in North Omaha. If a project came in in North Omaha that was eligible for TIF financing, there's no cap on the amount of TIF projects that could be approved. There's a cap on how much city area can be approved for a CRA, but that's not applicable here. That's like thirty-five percent of a city, and Omaha is not close to that number. So, you know, if this project were to be approved for TIF, that doesn't impact other parts of the city that could also receive TIF financing for such redevelopments.
Eric, maybe you should also touch on the fact that this body has no authority to impose affordability percentages or standards for a TIF recipient.
Yeah, sure. Obviously, there's a lot of talk about housing affordability and a need for affordable housing, which is great in our city, a great need in our city as well as cities across the country. This is not unique to Omaha. There is, costs are only going up. Many of you heard the, the talk earlier about sewer extensions and the costs and, and just, you know, whether it's materials, whether it's labor, whether there is price of land, everything is more, more expensive. And so housing affordability is continuing to be a challenge. And, you know, the city is, is looking at that. We are, this, this whole year, basically, twenty-twenty-two, we're gonna, the City of Omaha is developing basically a housing action plan that looks at housing affordability. But specifically as it relates to TIF, there is no state law or city law requirement that can force TIF to be used for affordable units. We have many TIF projects that are one-hundred percent affordable units. We have other TIF projects that are one-hundred percent market-rate apartments. And so, you know, it's a combination. We, in twenty-twenty-one, there were know, it's a combination. We, in, in 2021, there were, I don't know the exact number, but it was, it was at least over six or seven hundred affordable units that were approved at the TIF process. I'm sorry, I don't know the exact number. But, yeah, as it, as it stands, there, there is no requirement that TIF be used for affordable units.
Yeah, folks should be encouraged to rally their elected officials to, you know, make that change, whether that's at the city level or at the state of Nebraska. I think there's some of us on this board, myself included, that would agree with you that a recipient of a public subsidy should have some requirements for affordability. But at this time, we have no authority to require that of a developer that is accessing a public subsidy like TIF.
Thank you, Sidney. All right, Larry, I'm gonna give you the opportunity to come up. There's been, I hope you kept the list. I was keeping a list of things. There's a lot of items that we want to get addressed. If you could address any of them that you feel you can.
Yes.
One of them was about a layover. Let's start with that.
That will be a problem. And the reason why that will be a problem is that we've been working on this project for quite some time. We've got about all the extensions that we could possibly get from the various property owners. Remember, we, this is a land assemblage of, of eleven different parcels with eleven different sellers. And so, if one person does not agree to extend the contract, the, the deal's dead anyway, and the closing date is January thirty-first. They're required to close on these properties. So, even with that risk, with a, with a favorable recommendation of this board, and meeting with council members, et cetera, just to get a comfort level before the thirty-first, that's gonna be what's required, really, to, to move forward. Also, a, a layover or a negative recommendation from this board would probably be the end of the project. I mean, just being straightforward with everybody here. Unfortunately, we find ourselves in that spot. One of the reasons, we, I, I talked to a couple of the property owners back in September, and they wanted to have a meeting back then. And I think it was even offered up a meeting by the other development, part of the development team. But we just weren't ready. I mean, we were still working with the city, and, and we were working really hard to make sure that this project was compatible with the residential neighborhood to the north and west. And, and, you know, given the slope and the fact that they only see a portion of it. I mean, for example, I was gonna add, on the north side of the development, from the street to the building, it drops eighteen feet. So, there are two stories of the building you don't even see. Now, it's four stories above that you see, and it's, it's backed up. But, I mean, we, we went out of our way to make sure that it was compatible and, and looked appropriate. And so, when we went to them, our hope was, is that they would see the effort that was put into this design and layout of the development. Is, is it a, a big project? Yes. But is it compatible? Yes. And so, it, we'll find ourselves in a really bad spot with a layover, to answer your question.
Okay. Continue on with your, your list. I just wanted to have you address.
Yeah, that, no, I appreciate that. And, and if we could, that would be great. But we're just not in a position, unfortunately, to do that. I just want to add a few things. You know, obviously, you know, we believe we've met the BUT4 requirement with respect to the TIF, and, and, you know, this isn't a handout. This is a, a loan, but it's based upon the high costs associated with this project. Again, you know, installation of a street that hasn't been paid for over a hundred years, but yet it's a public right-of-way, the relocation of a transmission line that isn't even in our numbers, it's the site preparations, the grading, it's all the things that go into making these types of projects happen. I mean, again, the costs were forty-four million dollars to build this particular project. We're anticipating the valuation on full build-out of being about twenty-six million dollars, and that's on the income approach. So, I mean, it's gonna take a while for these guys to recoup their investment. So, BUT4 TIF, they would never do this deal because it's not feasible. I mean, the returns, I think, were four percent with the TIF and seven point six-six percent, I'm sorry, seven point six-six with the TIF. There's only about four percent without the TIF, and that's without the additional expenses that we're talking about, you know, potentially having to make with respect to the relocation of the transmission line, and also the extension of Forty-Ninth Avenue to Pacific, and, and then Pacific to 50th Street. So, there are some costs that we haven't even figured out. With respect to traffic, there's a traffic study being required here. It's been commissioned, and it's been submitted. You know, the thing about multifamily is everyone is always worried about traffic issues with respect to multifamily. That, that really isn't true, because multifamily doesn't have the same AM and PM peaks, because people live there, they reside there, they come at all different times of the day. But there is a traffic study being done, and I, I believe the traffic study and our traffic engineers here, but it shows the vast majority of the traffic going out on the Saddle Creek. And also, with the approved traffic study, and based upon the recommendation reports that we always have, we have to construct whatever public improvements are required, that are required by the approved traffic study. So, we are looking into those. I know Ryan Haas is here, and he's reviewed the traffic study. I don't know if he has any insight on that. But, but again, I don't think you're gonna see that traffic problem, because you typically don't with multifamily, because people leave at all different times. They don't all leave in the AM, they don't all come home in the PM. So, you don't have those increases to the AM and PM peaks, and that's how traffic is measured, by volume. As far as habitat, you know, we, we're required to do all the habitat studies before we remove trees, depending on the time of year, you know, that you remove the trees. You know, I think there was a misconception about the height of the building. I think the one gentleman said it's seventy-five feet. No, that's what R7 maximum height is, is seventy-five feet. We're under that, and I can go through, you know, all four sides again, if you'd like, but we're, we're well under the seventy-five feet on all four sides of the development. So, it is not seventy-five feet in height. That is the maximum height allowed in R7. We're not meeting that. As far as post-construction stormwater management, we have to deal with that. There's a whole ordinance regarding post-construction stormwater management, as you know. With the installation and construction of Forty-Ninth Avenue, we're also required to put in public storm sewers. Storm water's gonna go down the public storm sewer. It's not gonna be running off to the west, obviously. And then, the rest of the property will be captured to the east, and, and will be dealt with onsite, because we have to deal with water quality and water quantity issues, you know. And so, we have to meet all the site regulators of the R7 zoning classification subject to the specific waivers that we requested in the PUR. And so, other than that, we meet all the requirements of, of the R7 zoning classification. As far as Phase Two, there is no Phase Two. So, to the south of our development, we're not proposing anything there. We're not proposing eminent domain. We're not requesting that. We're not rezoning it, and that we're not negotiating to acquire it. So, I'm not sure exactly where that came from. That may have been an early discussion with Mr. Otis and, and the property owner. But that's, that was news to me also. So, that's, that isn't gonna happen.
Was that in response to Michelle, where her property was?
Yes. Right, yeah, yeah. I think maybe what Jim might have been talking about is if she were to sell, that maybe Pacific Street would go through there. And I don't know how much property shown is the south. I don't know. But maybe the likely, you know, continuation of Pacific Street hits Saddle Creek. I don't know the answer to that, but that's not being what's requested here whatsoever.
Not part of your project.
Not part of the project at all. It never has been. As far as the notice for the neighborhood meeting, I, you know, I just wanted to tell everyone, tell you, the planning board, we, we searched high and low for a place. And you know me, I'm, we, we did. And we couldn't find a place. Our meeting, I think it was on December twentieth, we sent the notices out, and I was getting worried because I didn't want to send the notices out too close to the neighborhood meeting. So, I, I finally pulled the trigger on the webinar concept, because I was too afraid that, you know, we, we were running out of ideas, we were running out of places, we were calling everywhere. We couldn't find any place that wanted to allow the public in because of COVID. They found a place, great. We didn't. But I sent the notice out, I decided to pull the trigger. I sent the notice out two weeks before December twentieth, because I did not want to give them inadequate notice. I mean, I really wanted to give them enough time to, you know, call and ask questions. And some of them did. I talked to almost every one of the property owners. I talked to Colleen Tanner. I talked to the Rushlaws several times. I've talked to Colleen a couple times. I talked to the, the woman across the street of Forty-Ninth Avenue. I can't remember her name right now, but I talked to her on the phone. I mean, I gave them my cell number and told them I was completely available to answer their questions. And that was after the, the meeting on December twentieth. They had another neighborhood meeting. I mean, I don't know what, if anything, would change between what's being submitted and a layover. I mean, there's really not much that can change, because we have gone the extra mile, I think, to ensure the compatibility and, and get the acceptance of the planning department with respect to the architecture and the, the layout and the massing and, and everything else. And I think, if you look at the massing, the massing, as it relates to, to Saddle Creek, is consistent with what's right across the street of Saddle Creek. And the massing that's next to the residential neighborhood is consistent with that residential neighborhood. So, we think we've really gone the extra mile to make sure that, that we were designing this with the neighborhood and the neighbors in mind. And we were trying to be good neighbors. We're not trying to be bad neighbors, that's for sure. So, with that, let's see, oh, construction vehicles clearly will be restricted to using Saddle Creek. We're not gonna have construction vehicles coming through the neighborhood to construct or develop this particular project. There's, there's no, no way we would do that. I think with that, you know, if you have any specific traffic questions, or any specific questions regarding anything else, I'm happy to answer. The development team's here as well.
I was just curious. Debbie came up, and she said something about one of the, your first map was incorrect. And I don't know, I might have to ask her what she meant by that, but.
Well, here, I'll.
Debbie, go ahead. I'm, I'm asking you if you could.
He, he included our property on the east side of Forty-Ninth Avenue in his map as being part of the development, and it's not.
That?
Not that one, no. The first one he put up. Where the black border is around the bottom, coming down to the south.
South of Bash.
That includes our property.
Goes like that, right?
That is not. That's our property.
Yes, never mind, sorry. I drew that this morning.
Thank you, Debbie.
Yeah, that, obviously, we're not including property that we don't have in our contract, and it's not part of the development. So, sorry about that.
I, I just wanted to get that, Clark. I didn't know what Debbie meant by that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I drew this line this morning, so I was in a rush.
Larry, can you talk a little bit, it kind of surprised, the new floodplain maps are gonna be coming out here from FEMA, as well as one of the people that testified, too. Can you talk about the risks that, that they're involved if this is in fact putting a hundred-year floodplain?
I'll turn that one over to the engineers.
And I'll just jump in real quick. Yes, there are new maps coming out that have been waiting to come out for quite some time. I don't know the particulars of that. It's quite possible that Eric here also does not know the particulars, so I just want to throw that out.
Eric Williams, Olson, twenty-one eleven North Sixty-Seven Street. I do not know the particulars of the FEMA maps. We have not seen anything of it. I know Saddle Creek has their drainage problems, and I'm sure the Public Works can kind of speak to that a little bit more. You know, as those maps come out, we'll have to work with the city and with Public Works regarding whatever measures will have to take place for those buildings and the structures that would be in that side.
Right now, right now, it's not included in the floodplain?
Right now, it's not included in the floodplain.
So, if it is included in the floodplain, that's gonna require insurance?
It'd require insurance or modifications of the grading to make sure that the buildings are out of the floodplain.
Which would raise the building height.
Which would possibly raise the building flight, or, yeah, building heights, or modify how we, we grade the site, yes.
And what is, and, and you mentioned it's not seventy-five feet at the highest point, but what is the highest point right now, is the way it sits from grade?
Yeah.
I'm just talking about the highest point, the very highest point.
So, again, this is showing all four sides of the proposed project. The highest point is at the northeast corner, where you have the two-story parking garage, and then the four stories above. So, that's six stories right there. That is at sixty-eight feet from the grade. Remember what we talked about as far as the north elevation? So, that, see, that, that whole parking garage is buried because it drops eighteen feet from the street. So, you can't, from across the street, you will not be able to see the parking garage from the north side.
That second, that second illustration there, what, what is that? Is that looking from the
This, this is looking.
From the east to the west?
Yes, east to the west. This is the main, you know, bulk, if you will, of the building, and that's where the parking garage is. The two stories of parking and the four stories up of apartments. So, all this is buried into the ground. So, you don't see that. If you notice, when you go around, clearly, you don't see it on the west side. You don't see a lot of it. There's on the west side, and then you start to see it on the south side elevation. And so, that's the parking garage here, and then that's the clubhouse. And then, you've got the, the, in this case, the four stories up. But over here, remember, it's only three stories, because that's the row house component, which is illustrated here.
Larry, what's the north elevation height?
The north elevation height is forty-seven feet on the west side, which is the three stories. And then, it is forty-eight feet in height. So, it doesn't go down a lot. It's pretty consistent across on the east side of the, the project. So, this would be Forty-Ninth Avenue. This would be the Saddle Creek side.
No, no, sir. I, I'll just tell everybody real quick. I closed the public meeting, and there's, unless a board member asks you to make a comment, that's the only way you can come back up. I closed the public meeting. I asked Larry to come up to address all of your concerns. That's why Larry has this opportunity.
Right.
Just, just wanted to make that straight for everybody, so, okay?
So, this is a more.
Thanks, Jordan.
This is a more three-dimensional look, if you will, looking from the northwest down. So, it shows the courtyard, and it shows the commercial properties out on Saddle Creek, the Forty-Ninth Avenue, and then, of course, Mayberry. So, this is kind of a, a look from the upper view, if that helps.
So, one of the concerns I, I've got is, is all of the testimony that we heard here today felt like, the community felt like they didn't have a chance to, to really interact. And I know what you said about trying to find a spot, and you had a Zoom meeting and webinar. But there's nothing like a face-to-face meeting, quite honestly. And I hate Zooms. I, I get it. I'm in the period we're in, I get it. But I'm a little concerned in the fact that they didn't have a chance to, to visit with the developers face-to-face, and you face-to-face, too. Can you, can you talk about that?
You know, unfortunately, we're in unprecedented times with COVID. I mean, I don't know what else to say. In fact, the day that we had the webinar was the last day I had to quarantine, because I had it. So, I, you know, I, I don't know, you know, we tried. I, that's all I can say. We called churches in the area. We called schools in the area. You know, I didn't want to have a meeting five, six, seven, eight miles away. Then, then everyone would be saying, well, gee, they had the meeting. It was eight miles away, you know. And so, I was trying to be as accommodating as possible and able to show them what we were, you know, doing here. It really, I mean, I, I think the planning department can attest to the fact that we were working on kind of last-minute details on, on building materials and elevations and articulation and everything else up until November, is kind of when I think we had the last kind of, all right, you know what? This looks good. We can support this. So, I mean, we were running under the gun, and we were trying, and we had the architects running pretty hard, trying to make sure we were accommodating what the, the planning staff wanted, because we knew we were running out of time. And we knew that if we didn't make this January fifth planning board meeting, it was probably over anyway. So, it was, it was that critical that we had to work as hard as we could in November to get these elevations in the best look they could. And I didn't want to meet with them in September, show them one thing, and then all of a sudden, you know, we're still revising elevations and, and building elevations and material choices and everything else. And we're doing that in September. We're doing that in October. We're doing that in November. We finally get locked in, and then, we have our meeting in December and says, wait a minute, that's not what you showed us in September. So, we were trying to be ultimately fair, I promise you, with the, the neighbors. And we encouraged them to be involved, and I encouraged them to call me, and they called me on my cell, and I talked to them. So, and I returned their phone calls, and, and I think the other members of the team did as well. So, there was no lack of trying to communicate with them, I promise you that. And we still have time to, to, between now and city council approving the various matters that are before the planning board today as well.
Yeah, and, and maybe you want to, you want to do that. I'd get.
Yeah. And, and we're, we're happy to do that. It's just, I don't know what more we can really do. I mean, this is, really, the project is submitted. This is really the, it, it's the only thing that makes economic sense.
And a delay, you say, is, is virtually gonna kill the deal because of the closings that you have on the real estate properties.
Yeah, you have, what, eleven different properties, eleven different property owners. I mean, you know, one person says, no, I'm done. And, you know, a lot of people have relied on, you know, making, thinking that, you know, we're gonna move this forward, and we're gonna be okay. So, people are, their expectation is they're gonna be finding replacement properties and everything else, and that this deal's gonna close. So, I don't know if going to them and saying, you know, and, and again, one property owner says no, and it's over, because it takes all of them, the whole land assemblage, to make this project work. So, the risk is so great that I'm not sure our developers. So the risk is so great that I'm not sure our developer would be willing to take the risk of one person falling out.
And every contract said they have to close by January 31st.
First, there's no extension?
Apparently, there's one exception. I don't know what. The multifamily can close when? Oh, March. But all the others are January 31st.
Larry, is there a way to stagger, I mean, I know we're talking about changing the project, but is there a way to stagger that north, bring it down, and then go to the far side away from the neighborhood and bring that up? I don't know if that would help with, with the people in the neighborhood saying, well, I'm not looking at a, you know, at a 45-foot apartment complex in front of me. I bring it down on that, on that side and stagger it and take it over to the other side. I don't know. I'm just trying to come up with anything to.
I always tell people I'm the attorney, developer, attorney, developer, architect, and engineer. But now you stepped over my architectural knowledge. So I'm going to turn it over to Dave Johnson.
Good afternoon. I'm Dave Johnson with Studio 951, 7305 Main Street, Ralston, Nebraska. We're the architect for the project. And I think your question has to do with the north elevation of the project. And we did, working with planning, with Jed, Eric, and Mike, we did work with them to bring that down to a three-story elevation, turn it into more of a row house look. Those units on the main floor are going to be walk-up type units, although all have kind of a front door and a front porch that faces out onto 49th Avenue. We broke it. We took a couple of units out, broke it with those entry elements that are kind of the more all-glass area. So it kind of looks like a three-plex, a seven-plex, and a three-plex that faces 49th Avenue with then the larger structured building behind it.
Jeff, were you asking about the northeast corner?
I was asking about the north side.
I'm sorry.
Northeast corner, I think. Is that what you're after, Jeff?
The top elevation there.
Yes, we'll zoom in on that, north.
Okay. So, yeah, on the north, as Larry said, it, the grade falls down off of Mayberry. We plan to kind of fill that in between Mayberry and the building to cover up the lower level of the structure, which is the parking garages. So that is a four-story building along the north side. I'm not su, I mean, architecturally, yes, we could do something. I'd have to talk with our developer client because that would most likely reduce the density of the project.
Was there consideration to do the pitched roofs on that side as well, to make?
There really wasn't. We mostly focused on the west side.
And the only reason I bring it up is because I think the fabric of the neighborhood is really most important on the west than the north. And I think there's been some, I appreciate the effort that's, that was, that went into the west side. The north side, you know, I think there is some concern there with the neighbors across the street that we heard. But maybe explain a little bit about that setback. How far is it really going down? And is that 48-foot height on the corner, is that 48 feet from Mayberry Street, or is that 48 feet from where the, you know, where the elevation then goes down?
That would be reflective of 48 Street from Mayberry.
Okay. Like, if you're sitting on Mayberry, that's kind of?
Yeah. And we plan to sort of level that area out between Mayberry and the north facade of our building.
And the setback is 20-foot of, is there, was there ever an opportunity to get that farther back to 30?
Not without changing the footprint of the building.
What's the setback of the current house, do you know?
I don't know.
Yeah. No, no, I don't have the answer to that. Setback on the existing house.
Oh, on the other side?
No, I think that the existing house that maybe is going to be going away.
Oh, it's about 30. If Google's right.
So if we did sort of go to the three-story version with the pitched roofs on that side, it really doesn't lower the height of the building. The building is still 47, 48 feet tall to the peak.
Give the neighborhood, I guess, more so than the literal height. But at the end of the day, I mean, I think it's all part of the equation to make sure that it, that it fits on those both sides. Just wanted you to kind of expand on that, so I appreciate that.
Sure.
Just add to that, remember the, on the west side, there are only three-story with the pitched roof. So if you were on the other side, four stories without losing units, and you pitched the roofs, now all of a sudden, you're, you're even higher in massing. So we really looked at almost, well, we did look at everything. And I don't know how many reiterations you had of the elevations, but.
Quite a few.
Quite a few.
Did you want to say something, Dave?
Well, I just was questioning what, you know, the existing zoning allows, what height of a home, if you will?
If you're looking at the R4 zoning, it's 35 feet.
35 feet?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what's there now.
Yeah, so we're at 47 feet on the west, and on the north, again, yeah, 47 feet. So, yeah, so we exceeded by, would you say, 35 feet?
R4 is a 35-foot.
Right, so we're exceeding it by 12 feet, which.
Well, technically, the way the zoning code looks at it, it would look at the mid-pitch of.
Well, that's true.
Of the roof. So I don't know what that number is, but it's.
And also, doesn't it look at it with the mean elevation of the grade as well, which adds?
Yeah, you could.
I mean, so it gets really complicated when you're really.
Well, I mean, you could measure it basically any corner of the building is a way that some people do. You could average out through the facade. So, yeah, there's some different allowances that the zoning code allows.
What I was trying to show you is really the absolute highest, highest peak, not really how the city measures height.
I understand. But, I mean, at the end of the day, everybody has to remember, we're not a design review board. That's not our function here. Our function is to respond to a, to an applicant that comes in with a proposal on a piece of property to see if it's something that can be done within the confines of the code. And it doesn't really relate to some of these things we're talking about. But that's what they brought us. They brought us this, this plan to see if it's reasonable within the city's master plan and our codes. That's what we're here for.
Is there any other comments or questions? Okay?
I just, just.
Go ahead.
Just reiterate, I think it's. And I appreciate your comments, Dave, but I think it's, community feedback's also important, too. And I, and I think that it would be to everyone's benefit if you could try and find some way to meet with the, with the stakeholders in the neighborhood prior to city council. I just think it'd be good for everybody.
Right. And we're happy to do that.
I got one last question.
Sure.
There was a single mother that came down. I think her name was Malene or Melina.
Yes.
I can't remember. But she had a few requests. I don't know if this will get laid over, if it'll get passed or denied. I don't know. But if it does get passed today, would you meet with her and?
We will meet with her and talk with her. Yes. I think the issues were the fence and the maintenance and landscaping.
Yes, yes, those were her issues. So if you would meet, if it gets passed, I don't know yet, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Eric, did you want to?
Yeah, there's a few items that I want to touch on quick. Somebody had mentioned the school districts overloaded. With all of our planning board cases, we send all of our projects to not just other city departments for input on the recommendation report, but, but other utility companies, school districts, other, you know, development entities. So OPS received these plans. We did not receive any specific comments for our recommendation report from them. So I wanted to briefly mention that. We can, we can definitely have Ryan come up if you do have specific questions. I know the, the question of extending Pacific Street to Saddle Creek came up at the public hearing at the webinar, and Ryan answered that there are, there are no plans, there's no project identified to do that. You know, so that, it's, there's no speculation that the city is even considering it, you know, as it stands today. Now, if there was a bunch of properties that redeveloped in that area, is that something we'd look at? That would have to come up at that time. But there are no plans to extend Pacific Street down to Saddle Creek. Just a little bit regarding timing, the preliminary, you know, if approved, the preliminary plat would proceed to city council, you know, the, ahead of other items. The PUR plan wouldn't go until a final plat went forward. So all of these items are not going to city council immediately. So I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, there is still time for communication and meetings with neighbors, you know, just to, to mention that. I don't know if I have anything else I really need to touch on unless you have specific questions.
Just because Scott brought it up about, there's an, and you may not be able to answer this, something about maintenance on an existing fence, and it's never been taken care of. Do you know anything about that?
I remember as a young planner, there was some conversations or emails, but that was probably about a dozen years ago. So I don't know of anything. I'm going to look back at some others that if.
There was an agreement, Dave Fanslow, City Planning Director. If there was an, Greg, to answer your question, if there was an agreement that the city was party to that that fence be maintained to a certain condition, and it is not being maintained, if somebody wants to give us their name and phone number, as I see one raising their hand, I'll give you my card after this.
Scott and Colleen, I think.
We'll surely look into it. And if there was some agreement that that entity needed to maintain that fence, we will hold them to that.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. I don't, I don't have any, anything. Are we going to take these one at a time here?
Yeah, so there are four cases on the agenda. I would just view them in the same order that they're, that they're on the agenda. So just to recap, there are a future land use amendment, there's the TIF request, then there's the plat and rezoning, and then there's a PUR. So those are the four items.
Let's take Agenda Item 7.
Agenda Item 7. I will give my recommendation, and we'll see how the motions and votes play out, and we can go from there. So for Agenda Item 7, staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote?
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Rosenbaum?
Yes.
Approved, 7-0.
Okay, Agenda Item Number 8.
Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
We have approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, 7-0.
Agenda Item Number 13.
Okay, so this one's a little more advanced, so at least one of you will have to probably flip to this page. Staff recommends approval of the MCC overlay for lots 2 and 3. Approval of the rezoning from R4 NGI to R7 for Lot 1 and CC for lots 2 and 3. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the eight conditions in the recommendation report.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I motion for approval of the MCC overlay district for lots 2 and 3. Approval of the rezoning from R4 NGI to R7 Lot 1 and CC Lots 2 and 3. And approval of the preliminary plat subject to the eight conditions in the recommendation report.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, 7-0.
And Agenda Item Number 22.
Recommend approval of the PUR subject to providing final acceptable plans prior to forwarding to city council.
Do we have a motion?
Approval of the PUR plan, unit redevelopment overlay district subject to providing the acceptable PUR plans prior to forwarding this request on city council.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, 7-0.
Just a reminder for all the people that came down today, this does go in front of the city council also. So you would have an opportunity there. It's 4:30. We've been sitting here three hours. Does anybody want to take a break for?
They did.
Does anyone?
Yeah, so if, if you're curious, we do not know those city council dates as we sit here. You can contact either the planner on the notice that you received, or you can reach out to the planning department. We can get you in touch. It might be a little time until we know specifically what those dates are, though.
All right, we're going to keep charging on here. And we'll go on to Agenda Item Number 9. Case C3-22-1. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the Community Innovation Campus TIF redevelopment project plan, location 1127 North 20th Street. Don, you're up, buddy.
Yeah, good afternoon, Don Featon, again, City, City Planning Department, on behalf of the TIF program and the project. This is the Community Innovation Campus TIF project. It's located at 1127 North 20th. It's basically Paul and 20th, Florence Boulevard, just a little north of downtown. The site is occupied by, it's about a two-acre site, occupied by an older warehouse distribution building of about 19,000 square feet. This building has been vacant for some time. It's in poor condition. The entire site is pretty much paved, older pavement. This building is going to be rehabilitated by the Omaha Economic Development Corporation. Rehab for use as a community kitchen and dietary call center. They're going to have as a tenant Catholic Health Initiatives, CHI Health. CHI Health will occupy the building as a tenant and operate basically a kitchen that will serve the community nutrition needs of CHI's existing medical facilities. They have plans to grow the operation into a 24/7 food service provider that would include providing services, food services for other medical providers in the metro area. So CHI is looking to greatly expand. Their current staffing level of about 75 employees may grow to be as much as about 175 full-time positions. CHI has been working in partnership with OEDC, and OEDC has gotten their pledge to give hiring priority for these new positions to residents of North Omaha. The owner developer is, like I said, OEDC, Michael Maroney is the manager. Michael Maroney is the president and CEO of OEDC. Total project investment in this area is about 8.5 million, $8,570,000. They are requesting $385,000 in TIF support. Project meets the required criteria for our TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the area, and it's been reviewed and approved by the TIF committee, and we ask for your approval.
Okay, thank you, Don. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Michael Maroney, President of the Omaha Economic Development Corporation, 2221 North 24th Street. Before I get into this project, I want to say, I didn't come up during Items 5 and 6 because I would have been redundant. But I want to thank you for your support of that project.
Thank you, Michael.
Omaha Economic Development Corporation is a 45-year-old organization. We're a community development. We do a lot of affordable housing, commercial realization, and job creation, and entrepreneurial development. This project, as Don mentioned, is in collaboration with CHI. They, right now, have about 75 employees that used to be located at St. Joe Hospital on 30th and Cummings. When they closed that down, they moved them out to Bergen Mercy, which is out, out west, as you all would know. But most of their employees come from North Omaha. Their goal was to get closer to where their employees live. Transportation, you can imagine, was, is an issue. They did make a commitment to us that if they are able to relocate back in North Omaha, that their future growth of additional 100 people over the next three to five years would be targeted toward residents in North Omaha. We think this is a worthy project for consideration. The only other thing I'll mention is that the cost of the project far exceeds the amount of TIF we are asking for, and that's because we had conversations with the assessors' office. And based upon the fact that there's no comparables in that area based on what we want to do, we have to be very, very conservative. This project will hopefully go a long way to increasing the value of property in North Omaha of this kind, and we could probably get more help and support. But anyway, we appreciate your support. And have any questions?
Thank you, Michael. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, this is a good project and one that we've been looking for, you know, working with Michael on, on several different sites, so I'm glad this is proceeding. Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sodolongo? Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I'm correct, Dave, we're on to Agenda Item Number Eleven, which was on, okay. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Case C three dash twenty-two dash three. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the disposition of city-owned property to an interested party. Location, twenty-six-ten North Twenty-Eighth Ave. and twenty-eight-fifty-eight Ohio Street. This was on disposition, it was consent, I mean, it was taken off, is the applicant here?
The city is the applicant, so I can just briefly touch that. We have a request from an interested party to purchase these two parcels that'll total in size about twelve thousand two hundred and thirty square feet. He is interested in also buying some of the other privately-owned properties surrounding it with attempts to, to build one, two, or three homes on the property, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Come on down and give your name and address, please.
Good afternoon, Sean Barnes. I live at twenty-eight eighteen Ohio Street. I and my wife been a resident at that house for approximately about seven-plus years after we remodeled it, and she grew up in that neighborhood over twenty-plus years. And being in that neighborhood, I've helped maintain and clean up the neighborhood and from my understanding, those lots weren't, wasn't for sale at the time. I request to, you know, make a, uh, the request to, to purchase the lots to help maintain the neighborhood because I also maintain a couple lots next to my house of twenty-eight eighteen over the past years and which I have a commercial more and able to hire to have trees cut down in that neighborhood. And recently, the interest, interested party that possibly is wanting to buy those two lots came in and did some tree work in that area and left a lot of, like a mountain debris that's next to my house that I gotta see every day and which will, is my concern of those other two lots that's in that area that he would do the same possibly and for someone to purchase that, those lots, I would think someone in the neighborhood that actually lives in the neighborhood would be the best option of maintaining those, those lots or in possibly building on in the future.
Sean, are you on Miami Street?
I'm on Ohio Street.
On Ohio Street. Where at on Ohio?
Twenty-eight eighteen Ohio. It's the corner.
I'm looking at our map. Where's? It's not the corner, is it the corner?
Yes. And I'm.
You're down, you're west of a few, a few lots.
I'm east of those two lots that y'all got on the agenda.
You're east of it?
Yes, on, right east of twenty-eighth Ave.
You're, you're the applicant for the other disposal?
Yes.
That was approved with the consent agenda, okay. Is your?
Is this him here?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I got you now, all right.
Okay.
Got you.
If I can, it, are you, are you concerned with who's purchasing it, or are you saying you want to purchase it?
I wanted to purchase. At the time, I wasn't told that the lots were for sale and I got wind of another party purchasing it and because of that, I wasn't able to do my process of contending for the properties like, like I should and also due to what happened in the past with the tree removal of lots next to me by that interested party that's also trying to buy the, the two properties that's on my Ohio and twenty-eighth Ave. Yes, me and my wife are interested.
Okay, all right.
Parties, because we live in the neighborhood, physically live in the neighborhood and I'm the only house that sees all, all the lots that's from that corner.
Okay.
And I, we had problems in the neighborhood of dumping and whatnot and I took time to.
You kept this lot clean.
Yeah, I, I help keep lots clean over, over time during the neighborhood cleanups. When they have it through the spring and fall, I go pick up trash and take it to the little sites and whatnot.
How, what would be your plans for the property?
My plans, I, I don't have a site plan, I'll just be honest with you. My plan was to clean up the, the property because it's a lot of, you know, debris and tree overgrown grass and I would just like to see the neighborhood, you know, thrive with, you know, being better as, you know, clean far as the debris and whatnot. And the gentleman, I believe, doesn't live in the states to take care of the property on a regular basis as I can.
My understanding, the requested party lives just northeast of you at twenty-eight fifteen Miami Street.
It's a residence, but I, I see him probably twice a year.
Okay.
His plan, that party is planning on building a single-family home on this, correct?
Yes, it has been told to, to build single-family homes. It depends on if he can also get the corner piece from privately-owned property at twenty-six oh four North Twenty-Eighth Avenue, could impact the layout. Yeah, that is the information we've received.
How do we proceed with this? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Are you done, Sean? I gotta call for.
Sorry, yes, I'm done.
Is there anybody else in opposition wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric, how do we proceed with something like this?
Well, obviously, we, we have interest in infill housing, you know, so I think our, our staff recommendation would still to, to proceed with the interested buyer. Now, if you have concerns and would like him to show up to Planning Board, I mean, you know, you could definitely lay it over to continue those conversations. It's not like a, a pending project that is time-sensitive.
Okay.
So. The shot, can he get a shot if it's laid over or would the process have to be, what was the process on his end if he wants? Yeah, we'd have to talk about that further as a staff. We have certain individuals who deal with this and, you know, that's not my area of expertise, but, but typically when there's competing parties, it's possibility that to put it up for auction rather than a direct disposal of land. I, I don't know if that would be an option here or not. We'd probably have to discuss further as a staff.
I would feel comfortable with a layover if we're, if you're not certain how this could proceed, you know, with an auction or not or, or full disposition. Any other comments from the board?
He's done a great job of maintaining the neighborhood like that, so I think we ought to give him at least an opportunity.
Okay.
Staff is fine with the layover, so.
All right. Any motion?
I've moved to layover.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Pete?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Have you been contacting or dealing with Autumn? Okay, reach out to Autumn and I'll talk to her tomorrow. Thanks.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead with Items Twelve and Twenty-One, we'll take those together. Agenda Item Number Twelve is Case C ten dash twenty-two dash five, C twelve dash twenty-two dash seven. Applicant Cassianus. What, oh, he's, Apogee Professional Services, request preliminary plat approval of Capriana, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from AG to R5 and R6. Location, west of two hundred tenth and Emmett Streets. And Twenty-One is, Agenda Item Number Twenty-One is Case C eleven dash twenty-two dash six. Applicant Cassianus, Apogee Professional Services, request approval of a PUD plan unit development overlay district. Location, west of two hundred tenth and Emmett Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Larry Jovan, one hundred and fourteen forty West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. With me today is Cassianus of Apogee Professional Services, also Reagan Pence of Lamp Renearsen, the consulting engineers on this particular project. This project is situated west of two hundred tenth and Emmett Street. Its current conditions, it's undeveloped and zoned ag, this kind of shows you. There you go. This shows its location with aerial photograph, the proposed area being developed is here with the adjacent property to the south is also zoned ag currently. To the east is zoned R4 and DR, the DR being this little drainage way running through here in the neighborhood to the east. To the north is also ag and R4 with, there's a church here in this location. And then to the west is ag flood fringe and floodway. So this proposed request is for preliminary plat and rezoning approval with the PUD for twelve lots. This is the site plan to the north facing the top, obviously. So we have twelve lots, one multifamily lot, which is the main lot here in the middle, and then we have eleven single-family lots and four outlots. The outlots are for drainage space, drainage ways and open space. The lot one is the multifamily project here and that's the only portion of the development that's actually subject to the PUD. The proposed plan calls for a hundred and forty-nine units in eight nine-unit buildings and, and seven eleven-unit buildings throughout the, the site. There's also a clubhouse with a swimming pool and all the various amenities, again, that you see in a Class A apartment complex that Apogee constructs. One of the examples of a really nice development that they've done, which I think this will be very similar to, is the Ravello Project at a hundred ninety-second and Pacific, if you're familiar with that, the project as far as the architecture. I do have some elevations that I'll share with you. All of the buildings are two stories, so they're just two-story buildings. The average rental rates are one thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars per month, so a fairly high average monthly rental on these particular units. Again, it's a planned unit development. The site has fourteen and a half units or less, which is low-density residential housing under the master plan. Based upon the number of acres on this particular project, it could be as high as seven, two hundred seventeen units as far as maximum density, so we're at a hundred and forty-nine units, substantially less than what the maximum density would be at fourteen and a half units per acre, which is still low-density. This is, so obviously consistent with the future land use map and the comp plan. Lots two through twelve to the north here, they are going to be single-family homes that'll range between twelve hundred and seventeen hundred square feet. This is a partnership with Habitat for Humanity, so the average home price is about two hundred thousand dollars and the, there will be, I, I don't know what Habitat for Humanity's model is, but I know that they do provide affordable housing opportunities for people. So unfortunately, Sydney left and I was gonna be able to tell her that, but she's gone. But, but that's a good thing, obviously, and it's appropriate for this location and this is, I think, the first time partnership with Apogee and Habitat for Humanity, so I think it'll be a great partnership moving forward. As far as parking, the required number of parking spaces are two hundred and seventy-seven parking spaces. We are providing three hundred and thirty-eight parking spaces, so we're over on parking. There's thirty-nine parking spaces, surface parking spaces, I should say, throughout the site. There are ninety-eight attached or, or in the building parking garages, and then there's sixty-two detached parking garages throughout the site as shown on the site plan here. And then there's a hundred and thirty tandem parking spaces, which are really out in front of the, the driveways of each one of the units. And then there's two accessible parking spaces. As far as access and circulation and working with the Public Works Department and Planning Staff, this is Emmett Street, that will go into that adjacent residential neighborhood here. You see, that's just a continuation of Emmett Street through the development to Elkhorn Drive. And then also we provided for the future location of Cleveland Street here in the southeast corner, so when and if that ag property to the south develops, that there will be another additional connection to the neighborhood to the east through this particular property. I just want to point out a couple things. We, we have about a twenty-foot grade change from the east property line to the, the building location here, so it's a pretty significant slope. Again, there's about sixty feet between the property line and the nearest building, which I believe that setback is, it's on here. Yeah, it's a twenty-five foot setback, so obviously we're exceeding that, we're, we're at sixty feet as far as from the adjacent residential neighborhood or the property line, I should say. The other setback here on the south side, it's a ten-foot required setback. We're actually providing a twenty-foot setback from the property line to the buildings. We have reviewed the Planning Department recommendation, find the same acceptable. We did have a neighborhood meeting on this one as well, a Zoom meeting. It was on December twenty-first of twenty twenty-one and I can't remember the number of people on the call, but we probably had six, ten, ten, I was gonna say six to ten, she says ten, so ten. And I, I think the neighbors recognized that this property was gonna be developed. I think their concerns mainly were primarily the connection between Cleveland Street and Emmett Street, you know, through their neighborhood, but obviously connectivity is important in the City of Omaha and we always try to comply with that, obviously, and that's what the master plan requires. So I think there's a full twenty-twenty-two start date and a twenty-four-month construction of the proposed project and I believe it will be built all as one project between Habitat and Humanity and Apogee with respect to the multifamily. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know if there'll be opposition on this one or not, but I'll be happy to respond to that as well.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing?
Larry Dunbar, two one zero one zero Elkhorn Drive. We still call it Elkhorn. And did you people get this paper from Elkhorn Village? You were supposed to get copies of this, because they couldn't make it, there are sixty people live in there and none of them could make it to the meeting, so I brought this along. You're, they said you would get a copy so you could read it. This is their concerns coming from, because I have a daughter lives in here in this Elkhorn Village area. I don't know if that's, if that's something you want to look at or not look at.
It does not look familiar. You could definitely provide us.
I'll give it to you.
I can give it to the, to the board. We'll have it for the file and, I mean, we can definitely have them look at it right now.
It won't do any good, I can tell that right now. My wife and own the, own, my wife and I own the five acres south that borders this proposed development. My folks moved onto this property in nineteen fifty-nine, raised nine kids there. In two thousand and ten, my wife and I bought it, moving from town. We never left after graduation, we never left Elkhorn. We are surrounded by acreages, which is a quiet and serene living as of now. It won't be. The purchase, person approaching us, inquiring to buy our property, told us he had a contract on that fifteen acres and was proposing a single-family dwelling development of fifty or sixty homes. Now it's being planned, a hundred and fifty apartments, eleven homes, and that's a big difference to us. The proposal would put approximately forty-four apartments backing up to our property. It will add a hundred and sixty apartments, houses, which in turn will add at least It will add a hundred and sixty apartments, houses, which in turn will add at least three hundred cars coming and going. I'm concerned that Elkhorn Drive won't be able to handle the additional traffic. And that's, they had some concern down that part, that, that Elkhorn Village. At the neighborhood meeting, planning, which was onsite on or on, online, which everybody got a little bitty card, tiny little card, most of people threw it away because they didn't know what it was. It just was, it was, it didn't, it was irrelevant. Most of the people in, in the neighborhood, especially Elkhorn Village, did not have a clue as to what it was. And they talked about not having a place to have a meeting in face-to-face. That church down there, Relevant Church, they rent that out as a social hall all the time. It's rented out a lot. I don't know why they couldn't have had a meeting. We wanted one face-to-face, but it didn't happen. At the neighborhood planning meeting, we were told that our pasture fences, by the, by this, I don't know if this guy, but the other engineers, were going to be taken down for grading purposes. Our property is zoned ag, which has been ever since we moved there in fifty-nine. In the past, we've had small animals in the pasture. If we were to have animals, how would we keep them in with no fences? They said they'd replace them, but that doesn't mean how we keep these animals in. We don't think our fences should be removed because we coordinated our fences with the gentleman who owned it before this last guy that owned it sold it. Needless to say, we're against this proposal. I know we're just one family and don't have much voice. But we don't, but we don't want our quiet neighborhood to change, and that's just what'll happen. We got, we have cars, the speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour past my house. They go fifty or sixty miles an hour now coming from town, people taking their kids to school. And you put, and then you put another hundred, two hundred, or how many cars onto Elkhorn Drive, there's no stoplight on Maple Street. We asked these people that too on our Zoom, and they said, well, that's not our problem. You're gonna talk to the traffic department. So one hundred, two hundred cars going out to Maple Street from Elkhorn Drive, there's no way for them to get across Elkhorn Drive, there's no light, there's just pedestrian crossing there.
Oh, that's right, it's just.
Just, just a push button. We asked for a light there years and years and years ago. Like I said, I've lived there my whole life since I was five years old. My folks even asked for one when they, when they, when they put the church in. We figured it was gonna, it was gonna be horrible for the people coming out from church and from their, they have a social hall, they ran out. So we haven't, we don't know what to expect because in one minute he tells us, Chris, this guy, whoever this first guy is, I haven't even met him now. I don't know who he is, he's some kind of a, he's got a name, but we don't know who, I've never met him. He come twice to my house when my wife was there wanting to buy our property. And I says, to me, it's a cold day in hell, he's gonna buy my property, because that was my folks' is. And I noticed on his plan that he took away, they show Cleveland Street dumping onto our property on our five acres. I have no idea why he wants to dump it on our property, because we damn sure ain't gonna sell to these people. It's never gonna be sold. My daughter wants to move there. And I told her, if you sell to these people, if I'm gone, hopefully I'm gonna live there for twenty, thirty years, but I have no intention to sell to anybody, to any of these Charleston homes or this outfit, I don't know who these outfits are, you don't, you don't, you don't know who they are. And once they put this stuff in, I said, they're not concerned about traffic. Because if you read that, I think you need to read, I wish I could have read that, but I don't know if they'll let me read that, what those people asked. The, the questions they had about people parking in the streets.
Yeah, we've been reading it.
You've been reading it? Because I drive through there to my daughter's house, and there's kids playing in the street all the time. You have a hundred, two hundred cars going out Emmett Street, out to Maple Street. That way, I don't know how these kids are gonna, I don't know how they're gonna be safe on there, period. That's a lot of people. And I said, it really irritated me that they were gonna take my fences down. Charleston Homes did that when they built the last home. They tore my fence down, didn't tell me till I looked back there. They said, well, it was on our property. I goes, well, we moved here in fifty-nine, that fence has been here since nineteen, who knows, thirty, I don't know. They said, well, we took her down. I asked, what'd you do with it? Well, we threw it away. And he gave me the, he told me several bad words that I could do about not putting that fence up. If I had goats out there or something, or a donkey or something, I don't know. I normally don't go back in that part and check the fence. Anyway, we got that solved and we got a fence put back up. But I don't know what's gonna happen when they, they start tearing into things and start taking our fences down. I have no idea. I don't see why they can come on our property and take our fence out when it was supposedly put in with the other landowner before this lando, that's landowner. I, I don't know. I said, I just don't trust these guys when they, when they told me it was gonna be fifty or sixty units, and now it's gonna be a hundred and sixty or a hundred and eighty. It might change before then, too. I, I just don't, I just don't trust what they're trying to do. Because they didn't even have an in, they didn't have, they had to go online for whatever it was, computer to do our talking, and they could have had a, they could have a meeting place just, the, the meeting place borders their property that they're trying to buy. That's how close it is. And that's all the people around there. I don't know why they couldn't have set something up there, they had plenty of time. It was just like, I don't know, it was, it's always like it's kind of under the board. One of you gentlemen, I think it's the man right there, used to, used to be in Elkhorn, when it was Elkhorn, and still is Elkhorn. Yes.
Both of us.
Both of you, it used to be Elkhorn. We don't consider it Omaha. We know we are, because the minute Omaha took over, if you know the, you know the drill, we lost all of our snow removal, because I lived in town for twenty-five, thirty years, and all of our police protection. No police patrol, zero zilch. And I don't get it now. I, I call the police department when the hoodlums are across the street in the park.
We were both on the city council.
I thought you were.
That's a subject for another day.
Well, the, the subject is, is dead essentially, but that's what I'm afraid of. It gets just stuff like this that just irritates you when you're there. So that's all I gotta say. I, I know you're, I know you've already got it voted, because you did with the last one. You already voted, it's already gonna be voted in, these guys know it, because they're not one, they're not one gonna talk to us. They won't, it'll just go, they won't have another meeting. I, I can just tell just by listening to them. I just, developers just bug the snot out of me. Because I have five, a guy lives, has five acres next to me to the south. They went and tried to buy his place. They said they didn't think they could because it wouldn't benefit them, because it wouldn't connect. That's why they want to buy my place, and they want to put this road that's gonna stop on my property supposedly. I don't, I don't know how that's, I, I told them, why are you gonna do that? Because I'm not gonna sell to you. My guess is we're all gonna be dead by the time they get sold to any developer, hopefully. Anyway, that's all I gotta say.
All right. Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Larry. Is there any others in opposition that wish to speak? Okay.
Dennis Secker, two one two zero two Elkhorn Drive. I'm the property to the north of that property. Yes, I got the thing in the mail for the meeting, and quite frankly, just like Larry said, I had no idea what it was about. Relevant Church is very open, within walking distance of all of us in that neighborhood. They did not try to have a meeting at all. The other part with the apartments, there is right now four major apartment buildings in Elkhorn. One of them being Elk Hills Apartments, that's the biggest one. That's three hundred and six units, according to the internet. There's other smaller ones that are still under construction, three other ones. I don't think there's a need for more apartments in that neighborhood. And like Larry said, we have wildlife in that area. I've got a half a dozen deer to come to my house every night, and Larry's. That will not be happening after this is done. Nobody cares about the wildlife. As far as the development part of it, I don't know how this property is developable. I refer to it as Billy Goat Hill. It is, I don't know, I don't know, what would you say it is, Larry, grade-wise? Twenty percent, thirty percent?
It's steep.
It's pretty, pretty steep. Okay, I have a creek that runs through my property that was a gift from the county and the city of Elkhorn before I ever owned it. It is, it is a water source from the neighborhood to the north of me. Anyway, it's, it's storm sewer that was dumped onto my property. When I bought the property twenty-two years ago, you could jump across it. Now you could park a full-size van in it. It's eroded that much. This development, nothing has been said about what kind of water containment, other containment ponds, which leach back into the soil, which we have underground streams coming out to feed that creek also. Nothing has been addressed on that, because I don't know if they even know it exists. But I think there's gonna be a water problem to who laid the chunk. There's another party that should have been here. What's the name of that nursery? Heritage Nursery. They're on the downhill from everything, and they are going to be, and they've been flooded out before. And they will be flooded out more so with this development. This creek, if you want to call it that, goes from being a trickle to when we have the, what I call frog strangler rains, like three inches an hour, to five and six foot deep, ten foot wide, twelve foot wide, whatever. It comes through Maple Street in a five or six-foot culvert, comes through my property and exits Elkhorn Drive in a, I think it's a thirty or thirty-six inch culvert now. I don't know who the genius was that decided that one, but you know, you cannot do that. You cannot reduce your flow and then reduce and add to what feeds it. And this is gonna create a major problem, not only where it meets Elkhorn Drive, but down in the nursery, they're gonna get flooded out on a regular basis. And quite frankly, I, you know, progress is gonna have, have its way regardless. This kind of caught us by surprise because the previous owner of this property had told me years ago, and he's a rich rancher from Ainsworth, Nebraska, that he was gonna build his final home on top of this hill, so nobody ever thought anything would ever get developed. And then late this summer, all of a sudden, there's an option to buy, and kind of caught everybody by surprise then. And in the interim, over the last three months, I've had surveyors on my property, surveying that property, and not once did I ever get a knock on the door, a note in the door, or anything that's ever gonna be on my property. So they're not good, and the original person that came and said, hey, I'm your new neighbor. I'm sorry, you're a developer, you ain't my neighbor. You're gonna create hell for me and everybody around me by doing this. And they're, they're proving that point right now.
Okay, thank you. Any others want to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Patrick Hastings, two one five zero zero Elk Ranch Point. My wife and I, our two kids, live west of what the proposed development's gonna be. We back up with Heritage Nursery. I believe you had the Zoom meeting on the twenty-second, I believe. Our letter was dated the twenty-third, and we didn't receive it till after Christmas, in which fact, we were out of town. I had no time to, I came back this week, had no time to contact developer. I guess my, not saying I'm opposed, it's just the fact that I would like to have a meeting and some sort of, whether it's gonna be a layover with a developer, in fact, of berms, tree placement, you know. For this size of development, you're proposing five trees at two hundred and fifty dollars a pop. The last time I checked, it's like, it's very small, we all know that, that's not a tree. I would prefer to have some sort of buffer, some sort of berm in place, where there's sizable trees, spaded trees, not just five, you know, two hundred and fifty-dollar trees. And on top of that, I do have a concern with the street, you know, Elkhorn Drive. There are zero shoulders on that street. You come out to a crosswalk, traffic light only. The amount of traffic that will be added has quite a bit of concern to me, the safety of people going to and from the park, Tazuka. And I guess, just on, with that, also with the lighting, if there is a light plan in place of so forth, just to reduce the excess light pollution that'll be caused with the parking lights and just the lighting of the building. Like I said, I think, speaking for my family and I, I just, the timing was not ideal. I mean, it's right during Christmas, and we're given this pretty much after the fact, and we had zero time to discuss or just have a conversation with the developer. And me looking at this last night for the first time, I guess is why I'm coming up here now, just to try and give me some time to have a discussion with them. I would greatly appreciate it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Patrick. Anyone else in opposition? Seeing none, I call the public here on, Larry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Larry Jovan, one hundred and fourteen forty Western Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. A couple of things, again, this is low-density residential housing, right? So when we talk about low-density residential housing, we talk about fourteen and a half units per acre or less. We're at the fourteen and a half units per acre, but we don't talk about the form of the housing, right? The form of the housing doesn't matter, it's the density that we look to. So in this particular case, this is the proposed look of what Apogee is doing on the multifamily or the lot one. And that's what they're looking to do. So again, if you look at a good example, Ravello, one hundred and ninety-second and Pacific. So that's what they look like, even though they're multifamily attached, they really have a single-family feel to them, because they all have garages in front, driveways in front. They all have their own entrances into each unit, so they're, they're nicely done.
Is it four, fourplex, Larry, fourplex?
No, there are actually nine unit buildings and eleven unit buildings. And I can't, there's like seven, I got the, it's eight, nine unit buildings and seven, eleven unit buildings. So, and if you wanted to, actually, believe it or not, I actually mapped them out where they are, so if you wanted to see. So, and then with respect to the Habitat for Humanity, the single-family lots at, in the north, that's, you know, that's a conceptual elevation, but again, single-family detached, what they're proposing on those nine lots to the north. So that's, that's what they look like. They are low-income, I mean, sorry, low-income, they are low-density houses. As far as the traffic study, there was a traffic study done on this particular project. It shows no additional public improvements are required to Elkhorn Drive. It actually operates at a level of service B, which is a very high level of service. The only one higher is A, and I believe the city will go, allow you to go all the way down to D and be acceptable. So what you try to avoid is F, right? So we're at a level of service B with no additional public improvements being required. As far as addressing the gentleman to the south, his concern about Cleveland Street coming through, that's only if and when, and if he never sells, it never happens. I mean, we're, we're literally just allowing that future connection if and when this development would, or this property would develop in the future. Same thing to the north, I, there's a little stub here, two hundred and twelfth street. That's a connection point if and when this property to the north would ever develop. We're obviously not making that connection, but we're stubbing it in. Why? Because connectivity is important under the master plan. We are, we're not removing his fence. I think the conversation was, if we did damage it or remove it during grading, we would replace it and repair it. So there's no intent to take his fence down. The, the hope is we can avoid his fence, but if it was damaged during grading, we would fix it and replace it. would fix it and replace it.
Is his fence on his property?
His fence is on his property, so.
It is on his property.
It's on his property. So yeah, I mean, our, our issue would be if we're grading the property and we damage it, we said we would, you know, replace it or, or fix it if, if we did. Obviously, the idea is not to do that. As far as the PUD, you know, what I always say is what you see is what you get with the planned unit development. So when he said, the gentleman said, well, this is what they're proposing for now, well, no, this is what we're proposing. If we're going to change it, any change to the number of units or the layout or anything else would be deemed a major amendment to the PUD, we would be back to planning board, back to council with that kind of an amendment. So this is what's being proposed, this is the number of units, this is the layout, this is exactly what they plan on constructing and building and nothing different. If we did something different, we would be back having another public hearing before the planning board and before council. So hopefully that alleviates his concern. I would also say, and we're willing to meet with them, again, you know, we try, we try our best to get these notices out and get people to pay attention, and then hopefully they come and they're open to everybody. We're never trying to exclude anybody. This is a preliminary plat like the last one, so we, there is time to meet with them and we, I'm happy to exchange information with them, and we'll meet with them again.
Call the church?
So, huh? We'll call the church and see if they'll let us. It kind of depends, I think the numbers with COVID are worse today than they were a month ago, so I'm not sure what will happen there. As far as the trees and the, and the bonding requirements, I think that was relating to the tree mitigation requirements. So in order to mitigate the trees on site, we have to put up a bond to make sure that we have money set aside that we will, in fact, mitigate the trees. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have, but I, again, I think we addressed everything. It's, it's a low-density site, it's going to be, go ahead.
Yeah, one thing that Ben mentioned was the runoff down that ditch.
Oh yeah, I do have that.
So explain to him how your runoff is going to be handled and what's going to happen with that ditch.
Actually, that was the last thing I wanted to talk about. So yes, he's correct. The site does fall about 60 feet, go in that direction. So all the storm water is captured along this retaining wall, and then it's put in, and then this is detention basin right here. Obviously, again, we're required to comply with all the post-construction stormwater management policies of the city and requirements of the city with respect to water quantity, water quality. Okay, so we have built a detention basin that will deal with the water coming out the site. It's then piped into this drainage way here. We are not touching this drainage way at all. We're not touching the trees there, we're not touching any part of it. So that's going to always be intact, and then the water will drain into what I believe is an open drainage way along Elkhorn Drive, just because it's not built to an urban section, still a rural section roadway. So the storm water is being dealt with. There's a retaining wall, again, that captures it, sends it into this detention basin, and it's piped into this outlot here and into the open ditch along Elkhorn Drive.
I think just for Ben's understanding that the, I think I'm correct in the requirements, that the first half inch of rainfall has to be captured, and that's what that detention cell is for, is that right?
Right. We, we can't have any net increase in the pre versus post-construction stormwater runoff. So in this particular case, you have a site that's completely ag right now. So anything we do with respect to streets and driveways and pervious coverage, we have to capture, so there's no net runoff post-construction.
Larry, how do you, what's your thoughts on a layover? I get the feeling, listening to the gentleman, that if there was more dialogue, a layover, that maybe a lot of these feelings could subside.
You know, my, my thought is, this is a preliminary plat, and, and we can meet with them between now and coming back to a final plat.
You have to be back to the final plat, yes.
And, and meet with them prior to city council on the preliminary plat. I, I think we're absolutely willing to do that. I, I think the gentleman to the south was on the Zoom call, and, and that's where we talked about the, the fence. But in order to move it along, I'm not sure anything's going to change necessarily, although there is some things that we might be able to do, maybe landscaping or some of those things. And we can also talk to the gentleman, I think lives in this neighborhood. And again, I was going to mention that as well to him, that we're happy to meet with him as well. Again, this is preliminary plat, preliminary plat has to go to city council, then we have to come back to this planning board with the final plat, and then we have to go to the final plat and rezoning to the city council. So there, I think there's plenty of time for them to.
If we made a motion with the stipulation in it that you needed to have another neighborhood meeting, you would be all right with that?
I think we're fine with that.
At least one additional meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. We're fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I don't want to tell you where it has to be, but it sounds like relevant, it sounds like the right spot.
Well, yeah, if, if the church works, that's great, you know, so I mean, we're happy to do that.
Keep people from Cussonatche.
What's that?
Keep people from Cussonatche.
Yeah, well, I know, I, I didn't develop Zoom, I wish I did, but.
You know, unfortunately.
Or a church.
Unfortunately, out in the Elkhorn area, there's been a lot of rural area undeveloped ground. Dave and I used to see it when we were on the city council, you know, where the apartments are now, nobody wanted those where Hearthstone homes are, nobody wanted that, and.
I was involved with that back then, I remember both you on, on the city council.
I know you were, you remember that, where they, you know.
Yep.
That was a cornfield, you know.
Right.
It, it just, you know, change comes and progress comes.
But we're happy to meet with anyone that wants to meet.
I think, yeah, I think these gentlemen just need, they need to be heard and they need some explanations.
Totally, totally fine with that.
And before you would come back here for, if there's a motion to approve this for a final.
Sure.
Okay.
That's acceptable.
And we're going to hold you to that if this gets passed for preliminary.
Absolutely.
All right. Any additional comments or questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, so obviously we have a couple items on the agenda. Not much, yeah.
Just a second.
Yeah.
Larry, will you grab both these guys and make sure they got your card and everything before they get out of here? Thank you, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Eric, I'm sorry.
Yep, no, so not a, a lot of comments regarding the plat, few sidewalk comments, you know, coordination with parks on the relocation of the trail crossing to the west of Elkhorn Drive there, full wetlands report, the five trees, yes, were the, were the mitigation tree plantings. There are many more tree plantings that'll be done as part of the PUD. So I don't think I need to get into many more details, it's been a long day. So if you have questions, definitely ask, but otherwise, I will read the recommendation for Agenda Item 12.
That'd be good.
Approval of the rezoning from AG to R5 and R6, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 17 conditions in the report.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the rezoning from AG to R5.
And R6, an approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 17 items in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Sol Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove 6-0.
Agenda item number 21.
Staff recommends approval of the PUD overlay district subject to submission of acceptable final PUD plans providing additional sidewalk, trail, and drive connections, accessible parking spaces, and architectural building elevations prior to city council.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval of the PUD planned unit development overlay district subject to submission of acceptable final PUD plans providing additional sidewalk, trail, and drive connections, and accessible parking spaces and architectural building elevations prior to forwarding this request on the city council.
We have a motion in a second. Debbie, will you record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sol Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove 6-0.
Agenda item number, okay, agenda item number 15. Case C10-22-13, C12-22-14, applicant Celebrity Homes, Omaha. It was on consent for approval, it was taken off. Request preliminary plat approval of Stratford West, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG and DR to R4, location southwest of 171st Street and Military Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
You're on.
Members of the board, my name is Mark Johnson. My address is 11440 West, I guess I could lose this, couldn't I? 11440 West Center Road, appearing today on behalf of the applicant Celebrity Homes. With me today is John Coolish from Lampoon Ears, and they are the engineers for this particular project. I will be brief, as this was on consent agenda for approval, and reserve the time, obviously you're, I appreciate your time, it's been a long afternoon and evening, so I'll reserve the time to respond to any opposition questions. But the basics are, this is a single-family subdivision, the request before is for the approval of the preliminary plat for Stratford West, along with the rezoning from AG and DR to R4. The preliminary plat has 220 lots with six outlots. One thing that's not unheard of, but also not very typical in this case, is there is some right-of-way that, that we will need to acquire outside of our parcel that's in your, outlined in your recommendation package. We have had some conversations with that property owner, I believe he is in attendance today as well, and we'll continue to have those conversations in the coming weeks and months in hopes of reaching a amicable, amicable resolution on that issue. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none? Are there any opponents? Seeing none? I'm sorry, I was looking the wrong way, come on.
There's two, missed two. Me included.
Jason Peery, address 9119 Kilpatrick Parkway, Bennington, Nebraska. I also own parcel 0122710005. That is the affirmed awkward lot that Celebrity is looking to try to acquire. I've got a, I've got a statement. I know this is a preliminary approval, so I know there'll be, it sounds like a lot of discussion, be honest, so I guess I'm new to this type of process. Is there, what, once, can you explain to me how the process works as far as a preliminary approval and where it goes from here?
Sure, Eric will. Go ahead.
Preliminary plat, if approved by, if recommended for approval by the planning board, or if it's recommended for denial as well, it could proceed. But it proceeds to city council. The city council would vote on the preliminary plat, assuming that's approved. A final plat would then have to be submitted to come back to planning board, which would then also proceed to city council for a vote as well. So there's four different public meetings, two at planning board and two at city council.
So if there's any change.
For the overall plat, for the preliminary.
Sure. If there's any changes made to the plat, does it have to go back to the preliminary stage?
Not necessarily, sometimes depending on the.
If it was like a removal of one lot, let's say?
Um.
Hard to say?
Well, I don't, yeah, I, I would probably need more details about what lot it is.
I'll try to elaborate a little bit. So I, I object to the proposal, you know, for the following reasons. The proposed plat assumes my property will be incorporated into it. I do not consent to the usage of my property as part of the proposed development. I've not agreed to sell any portion of my land to be used for the proposed development, nor have I been presented with an offer to sell. Lot 20, I don't know if you guys had the plot planned?
Yep.
Lot 20 has snuck into the south side of Rachel Snowden Parkway. The proposed development of that lot negatively impacts the value of my home and land. For those reasons, please note for the record my objection to this development. If we could do something with Lot 20, I mean, I think that would go a long ways towards, you know, helping the cause. It's snuck in there on the south side of Snowden, it's the only house that would be on the south side of Snowden. It seems to me that that would be not very evident, that that house is part of the proposal by Celebrity. So, you know, for that reason as well, I would, I would like to have that lot removed. Notably, Celebrity Homes, as far as I can tell, has violated two sections of the Douglas County Land Use Regulation statute, specific to the proposed name of the subdivision, which shall not duplicate or confusibly resemble previously filed plat names. Stratford Park West, as named by Celebrity Homes, in this development violates this section by the quote-unquote "like" naming of the development. The proposed naming of this is both confusing and potentially reduces the value of Stratford Park, which the planned neighborhood would be connected to via common roadways. I recommend a new name for the development that is no, that no way resembles Stratford Park. Secondly, I don't know if it's applicable here, but it was part of the, it was part of the Douglas County Land Use Regulation statute. A sign shall also be posted on the property with information regarding the public hearing, and I have not seen a sign.
Okay. Is that it, Jason?
Yeah, I don't have anything else.
But just to confirm, Lot 20 is not on your property.
Lot 20 is not on my property, no. Correct.
Okay.
Other questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Was the fence you constructed, did you receive a building permit?
Yes.
Okay. When did you construct it?
Hmm, two or three years ago, two years.
Okay. You have split zoning on your property?
It's not, it's not platted into my property.
Okay. Is that paving in the back, what is that used for?
That's a basketball court.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now.
Okay.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah.
Come, come forward, sir. Give your name and address.
Yes. Tom Luritzon, 17306 Military Road, Bennington, Nebraska. I'm here both in my individual capacity and also as an attorney for myself and my neighbor to the west who owns 25 acres, I own 10. I know this is the preliminary plat, I used to buy real estate for bakers. I know there's going to be development over there. My concern primarily is the high density and the traffic. You know, I'm, my prop, my house is up far enough that, you know, it's going to obviously affect my view, but that's, that's progress, I understand. But this is a high dev, high-density project. The traffic out there on 168th Street, right now, when school is in session and out of session, is absolutely unmanageable. And there's cars that are screaming, they're avoiding 168th, going to 180th, coming across, then coming down Military Road. This, this is going to be a very untenable situation. I'm, I don't have any kids, nobody's going to get hurt on my property, or, you know, in my case, but it's, it's not a good situation, and I would expect that hopefully there would be some way to have a lower-density project for this property. But that's, I'm just here on my behalf and on behalf of Mitch Elliott and his wife, Kim Elliott, with the 25 acres just to the west of me, he couldn't be here today. Thank you. If you've got questions.
Any other opponents?
Good evening. Jesse Sleeper, and I reside, I reside at 9125 Kilpatrick Parkway. The backside of my property does match up with the south side of Lot Number 20 that's proposed in the Stratford West neighborhood, as Jay alluded to over here. I guess my concern is, the backside of that property line is about, it's within 50 feet of the back of my home. You know, I'm concerned about my kids' safety, they play in the backyard a lot. It seems like this lot has just kind of been thrown in on the south side of Rachel Snowden, as Jay alluded to. What's concerning to me is that a lot of the existing properties in Stratford Park, they're bridged by this Rachel Snowden that's going to separate this new neighborhood, but Lot 20 is just kind of an outlier, and it just backs up right to our property, and it's just, I probably don't have any legal stance on it, but it's, it's sticking out like a sore thumb to me, and I don't know if I have any recourse with this. But that's why I'm here today, is just to express my opposition to Lot Number 20 in particular. So, any questions?
Okay, thank you, Jesse.
Okay.
Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. Comments or questions from the board?
But that's why I'm here today, is just to express my opposition to Lot number 20 in particular, so, any questions?
Okay, thank you, Jesse.
Okay.
Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? Eric. Oh, just a second, I'm sorry. Mark, did you want to come up and...
I guess, Mark Johnson, 11440 West Center Road. As it relates to Lot 20, it's important to keep in mind that property to the west will someday be developed in all likelihood, which is why Rachel Snowden gets punched through to provide access to the west in conformance with the City of Omaha master plan. So it looks like it sticks out right now. One, it meets all the site regulators, it's over a third of an acre in size, it's plenty big for a single-family home with these zoning regulations, which is the same zoning regulations as the neighborhood to the south. So I guess that's, that's what I would add as it relates to Lot 20. As to the code sections that Mr. Peery cited, those are not applicable, I don't think here, I'll let Ms. Taylor confirm, confirm that, but since we're in the City of Omaha, we're subject to the City of Omaha, City of Omaha's ETJ, rather, we're subject to your subdivision regulations, which reads slightly different, and there is no likeness requirement, or confusing language as it relates to the name, it just precludes a duplicative name. As you guys are aware, you see these subdivisions come through all the time, it's not uncommon to have a continuation of a, of a platted name, Sagewood, Sagewood Point, Sagewood Valley, Sagewood West, just for example, so, that's, that's what I'd say about that. And as far as density, I think we're a little under three homes per acre, so, that certainly is, complies with the master plan and the future land use element of the master plan and the zoning. So with that, I'd be happy to answer, any questions?
Okay, any questions for Mark? Thank you.
Yeah, so I only want to touch on the Rachel Snowden Parkway extension, as it relates to the proposed Lot 20, and then the remnant 1.35 acre piece that the first opponent spoke Unfortunately, that property was transferred, a deed was filed and recorded by the Douglas County Register of Deeds. I would say that is not a proper transfer of ag property. State law requires a 10-acre minimum transfer for ag piece to be transferred. Unfortunately, I do not, I do not control the Register of Deeds office, but it does create some problems, or just some additional challenges as we need to extend Rachel Snowden Parkway. So, absolutely, Lot 20 should be included in the plat. I wish the other remnant 1.34 acre parcel was included in the plat that was originally part of this subject site. There would have been two or three other additional lots there on the south side of the Parkway. So, we have conditions in place that account for the extension and, you know, obtaining that for right-of-way for the Parkway, so, I guess that's the most important issue to bring up, and that we'll have to continue to work with the development team on. So, that being said, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG and DR to R4, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 25 conditions in their report.
Do we have a motion?
I motion for approval of the rezoning from AG and DR to R4, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 25 conditions in the recommendation report.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you, will you record the vote, please?
Morris?
Yes.
Pay?
Yes.
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve 6-0.
Agenda item number 16, KC10-22-15, C12-22-16, applicant Graves Development Resources, requests preliminary plat approval of Evergreen, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R4 and R5. Portions of the property are located within the Flood Fringe Overlay District, the location, southeast of 168th and Military Road.
Lawrence, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the developer. Also with me is Brett Shaw, the fully Shaw, the consulting engineers on this particular project. This is a single-family subdivision, it's 158 acres, approximately 40 acres of which are located in Bennington's ETJ, so that's kind of an interesting twist on, on this deal, the rest of it in yellow is all Omaha. The part in green is Bennington's extra territorial zoning jurisdiction. It's calling for 302 total single-family lots and five outlots, 80 townhome lots in the western portion here. This is all part of the NRD dam site here in the middle, and there are, let's see, it's going to be zoned, R5 over here on the townhome lots, and R4 on the rest. The only thing I would point out is that this went to Bennington Planning Commission on December 29th, and was recommended for approval, and I believe it goes to Bennington City Council on January 10th, which is next Monday, for that portion that is in Bennington's ETJ. So with that, we find the recommendation of the department acceptable, and we're here for questions.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board? Where'd Eric take off? There he is.
Sorry. You needed a break and you didn't give him one.
Yeah, I asked you for a break and you said no.
Like no opponents, proponents, anything? What are we on, even?
16, Evergreen.
Yeah, so we talked about this quite a bit in the pre-meeting, you know, I don't think I need to get into too many details, it's getting late, obviously, joint plat with Bennington and Omaha, so. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R4 and R5, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 36 conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
Motion for approval of the rezoning from AG to R4 and R5, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 36 conditions in the recommendation report.
Did we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pay?
Yes.
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve 6-0.
What are you guys here for?
You guys get a good nap.
Agenda item number 27 and 28, we'll take them together. Agenda item number 27, KC7-21-121, applicant Malibu Properties LLC, request approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC District, location 600 North 210th Street. Agenda item number 28, KC7-22-26, applicant Malibu Properties LLC, request approval of a parking adjustment for a mixed-use development, section 55-736, location 600 North 210th Street. You're up, Jeff.
All right, well, this is weird to say, but good evening, right?
Yeah.
Jeff Lake, 21008 Cumberland Drive, here on behalf of Malibu Properties. With me also is a landowner of multiple properties that we'll be discussing today, this evening, Willie Douglas. I'll try to kind of move it along here in the interest of time. What we have in front of you, you've seen a couple...
It's a good thing we went over this in the pre-meeting, so...
Yes. So I guess maybe on that, you know, maybe are there any questions you guys have? I'll just leave it at that, I've got all the materials here and information, and can, I guess, react to questions you guys might have on what we're trying to do here.
Okay.
I don't think there's any other public hearing people here.
Any, any additional questions? Jeff?
Signage.
Signage, 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 yeah.
Signage, notifications, yes.
Yep. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Eric. Well, sorry, guys, I let you go first in the pre-meeting, so I guess I made up for last here. Yeah, no, so, obviously, we talked about this at length, removal of the southern parking lot for the, the southern conditional use permit, but basically, looking at other properties, filing a deed restriction against those properties to account that those stalls are accounted for in case there is a sale. You know, if there is a sale, if we need to come back and look at, you know, an amendment, we can do so at that time, but that's looking down the road. So, obviously, we want all the paving to be on hard, required to be on hard surfacing, you know, so the sooner that this southern facility can get constructed with that parking, I think is a benefit for all, and we believe the plan laid out with the parking adjustment is an acceptable solution. We acknowledge, yes, traffic is busy, but we think it's a pretty good area. I know that, you know, we've never heard from neighbor, residential neighbors, you know, in opposition to this project at all. You know, we've heard a little bit from the one property owner to the south, so, unless you have any specific questions for me...
No questions, just the stipulation of increased signage for parking and for traffic, if we can, like Willie was saying, if you can get people out, going out skyline, hopping on Dodge, that'll, that'll help a lot out there.
Agreed. Yes.
So I guess we would take agenda item 27 first. The recommendation is approval of the major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC District, subject to the 11 conditions.
Do we have a motion?
Motion for the approval of the major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC Community Commercial District, subject to the following 11 conditions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Pay?
Yes.
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve 6-0.
And then, agenda item 28, so a parking adjustment is treated like a conditional use permit, it stops at the planning board as well. So, staff recommends approval of the parking adjustment for a mixed-use development pursuant to section 55-736, subject to the three conditions in the report.
Do we have a motion?
Approval of parking adjustment for a mixed-use development pursuant to section 55-736, subject to the three conditions in the staff report.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pay?
Yes.
Sod Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve 6-0.
Thanks, guys, for being patient.
Thank you, guys.
Hanging around, it was a long day. We have election of officers, do we have a motion or nomination, I guess, for chairman?
Minutes.
A motion to nominate Greg Wilsonbaum for chairman?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Hang on a second. Okay. Patrick, motion for you, Greg.
Yes.
Who seconded that?
I did.
You guys are so fast. Okay, so we got the vote going. Sod Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pay?
Yes.
How about you, Greg?
Thank you, yes. Do we have a, we got to go with vice chair. Do we have a motion for vice chairman?
Who to nominate?
Dave Rosacker.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Dave Rosacker?
Who seconded that? Who seconded that? You did.
Mike Payton nominated and, and Patrick...
Seconded it, okay.
Motion to second, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, Rosacker, you going to vote for yourself?
Dave?
Yes, he does.
Yes.
Do I vote for myself?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. I didn't, I thought I was abstaining.
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.